Good evening, welcome to the San Carlos Planning Commission Special Meeting. This is July 24th. First, we start off with the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Plenty of seats up front. Could we have a roll call?
Commissioner Roof. Commissioner Yakaponi.
Here.
Commissioner Dugan.
Here.
Vice Chair Bergman.
Here.
And Chair Bradley.
Bradley is present. Next is public comment. Public comment is limited to items not on the agenda. The commission may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed by the Brown Act. However, the commission's general policy is to refer items to staff for their attention or have a matter placed on a future Planning Commission agenda for a more comprehensive action or report. Since this is a special meeting, we have no approval of past minutes. We do have one election appointment of an officer, and that's to elect an alternate Residential Design Review Committee Chair. It's an alternate, would only come when the regular chair from the Planning Commission, Ms. Bergman, was not able to be there. Any discussion or motions from the Planning Commission?
Through the chair, I believe there was one public speaker who wanted to speak on an item that was not on the agenda.
Yes. That's Lorraine Ledner? Ledner?
Yes.
Would you come up and tell us what it's about unless it's, if it's on the Shack, on the single-family housing, this wouldn't be the time, but it's not, right?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
I had two questions. One was notification to neighbors. What is the rule? I looked up, I was trying to find the rule, but I couldn't. And also, the second one is grandfathering. If someone has a property that's six inches, as my garage is, six inches from their property line, because it was built in 1933 before they were sane, how close can my neighbor, if they extend their garage, right now it's just slightly forward, if they extend their garage toward the back, is it still true you can continue a line even if it happens to be like two and a half feet or two feet from the property line?
I would defer to the city attorney or one of the planning staff members.
I mean, I think under public comment, we can get back to you on those questions. It's not usually, we usually don't respond to questions. There's a lot of facts that we would want to analyze before we could answer that question.
Where would I bring that question?
Either to planning, to the planning department.
Oh, okay.
Just either to Lisa or someone else that she assigns it to.
Okay.
So I will get back to you on those questions, just so you can put a face to the name.
Thank you, Lisa.
Okay. Thank you. So we'll go back to the appointment for the RDRC alternate chair. Any motion? We need to fill a position.
When I came in here was John, I'm going to mention to nominate John for the area of the city.
You can decline.
If there happened to be a different volunteer, I would be open to that at this point, as I'm coming up to speed as a commissioner.
All the more reason to be on the RDRC. But, yeah. That's you, obviously.
And through the chair, if the commission would just like a little bit of a very quick background, I think you all understand what's before you, but this would, this is something new that's added to the makeup of the RDRC, as you might imagine, with the three-member committee. Sometimes certain things come up, and if we don't have a quorum, we have to cancel. So we felt it would be a good idea to allow a planning commissioner to serve as an alternate in case the primary could not attend. During, your predecessors had elected Commissioner Bergman to serve as the RDRC chair, so this appointment would both, would only be in the case where Shannon Bergman could otherwise not attend. And, and if you, if a planning commissioner was available to attend the meeting and had the time to review the packet, then the meeting could take place. But if, in any case, if either of those conditions couldn't be met, then we would just postpone a hearing. So that's just a little bit of background about why we have this before you. And once again, the RDRC meets the first and third Thursdays of every month, just like the Planning Commission. However, the RDRC meetings start, excuse me, I meant Monday, there's too many dates in my mind, thank you, the first and third Mondays of the month at 5:30 PM.
Thank you.
And Lisa, is this traditionally rotated manual basis, or how is this handled?
That's correct. Every year, there are new appointments made to the RDRC, as well as the Planning Commission Chair and Vice Chair.
I think it's a good experience. I was on the Planning Commission for a year, and last year then I was on the RDRC also. It's good experience and a satisfying position, actually, much like the Planning Commission.
Sure. With the understanding that this does rotate, I, I second the movement to make me the Alternate Residential Design Review Committee.
I don't think you can second, you can accept the nomination, but someone else is going to have to second it.
I'll make the second.
For the role, then? Commissioner Roof.
Yes.
Jim Yakaponi.
Yes.
Commissioner Dugan.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bergman.
Yes.
And Chair Bradley.
Yes. Thank you, and congratulations. I think you'll enjoy it.
Thank you.
Especially since you don't have to come every week, just very infrequently, but it will be a good experience. Then we'll open the study session, continued from May 21st, already two months ago, on single-family zoning ordinance change. Our consultant is here. Are you ready to present, Stefan?
Mr. Chairman, Al Savay, Community and Economic Development Director for the City of San Carlos. Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, good evening. I'll start with a few remarks, and I'd like to start by talking a little bit about the process and where we have been and where we're going. So to start, in terms of the process, this, this is a very, it's a big deal for any city. It's probably one of the biggest things that a city, any city can do in terms of a zoning change, development standard change, so for any community, because most of our property is in single-family residential areas, and it affects, it affects us as property owners and residents in the community. So it's a, it's a very complex undertaking, and as a result, it takes a lot of thoughtful discussion and consideration and dialogue between the city staff, the policymakers and consultants, and the community. And so as a result, we've had a pretty rigorous process put together, and we're pretty much still in the middle of it, and we started this process, the city council appointed a single-family house advisory committee. And they were residents of the community, there were seven members of the community, and a number of them were ad hoc members of the community, and some of them had some particular experience in real estate, architecture, construction, and development. And this committee was formed to take a look at this issue, work with the consultants and city staff, and come up with some ideas for consideration by the city council and the Planning Commission in the community for how to reduce the bulk and mass of homes. The city staff was charged with, well, the main issue is houses look too big. A number of folks in the community have been saying, through a process that we went through earlier last year to limit lot splits in the community, that houses were also too big, so that's another issue. There's lots of words for it, that people use mansions and things like that. But basically, the bulk and mass of the homes, particularly, I think we've heard from a lot of people in the flatter areas of the community, but we have talked to some people up in the areas where you have hillsides. But that's the key thing that we were, we're trying to solve for, is how to reduce the appearance of the homes. And there's all, there's other ancillary issues with regard to privacy and the light between homes and privacy in backyards and things like that. And so what the Shack did, the Single Family House Advisory Committee, they met and researched the issue very extensively. They had six meetings and spent hours and hours analyzing this issue and came up with a series of recommendations. And the recommendations that they came up with are somewhat new to cities on the peninsula in San Mateo County, although some of these ideas have been used in other communities, and we'll show you, we'll talk about some of those communities in a moment. In any field, advancement is, occurs, right? I mean, in engineering, dentistry, architecture, science, we have advancements. And sometimes you, you can use a certain way of doing things over the many, many years, but you'll find after those many, many years that some of those things just don't, don't work as well as they used to, and maybe there's a better way to do it. And so the Shack came up with some ideas. A number of them were, are based on forms, the forms of the building, not necessarily the square footage of the building, but how the building looks to the person walking down the street, how the building looks from the neighbor's backyard. And it was addressed in a form, addressing the form, the bulk and mass of the building, as opposed to just square footage. So they had a number of different meetings. Architects, a number of community architects have taken a look at this thing, and they wrote a letter early in the process in April, and they were very concerned about it, and they had made some suggestions. And we, city staff, then sat, and the consultants sat down with the local architects. As a city planner, I think it's very important to meet with the local architects to get a reality check. I think reality checks from the, from the professionals in your community that are doing the work for the clients, the property owners, is very important. So we did that. So we had a number of meetings, and it took a while, and it takes a while to understand this stuff. Zoning is not an easy thing to understand, it can be very complicated, and we will do our best to keep breaking this down so everybody understands it. Even I have a hard time with it sometimes, and I've been doing it for many, many years. So we met with the architects. The city council has been keeping on top of this, they, they're asking questions, we met with subcommittee of the city council. We had a public workshop back in May and talked to a lot of people, it was a very well-attended event. And we had another Planning Commission study session to start talking about these concepts. And then we had another meeting with the local architects, and we're, we had a number of meetings because they made a number of suggestions, and we wanted to see if we could work that out with them and see if we could come to something that they thought would be reasonable based on their practice. And so you'll see tonight that city staff is making some additional recommendations on top of what this single-family house advisory committee has made to accommodate the requests of the local architects. And so tonight, we're at another Planning Commission study session. This is a step-by-step process, and I've, I talked to a few of you this evening, and we continue to talk to each other on the phone and in emails, and we will continue to do that. And we'll just keep trying to answer your questions and get to some solutions. It may take a while, but I believe that, that we can get there and have some good solutions for our community. So some of the suggestions that we've heard from the public, and I'm just going to touch on a couple of these before Stefan, our consultant, gets into some real details. Also, you'll see here in front of you, we have a number of different models that Stefan's going to walk through, and feel free after the meeting, or if the Planning Commission wants to take a little time to look closer. But Stefan is going to walk you through how these forms work and compare the existing standards to the new proposals that, that we're talking about. But what you see on the screen is some of the suggestions that we've heard from the public, control house size by floor area ratio. And what floor area ratio is, is it's the gross size of a house, the total square foot of the house divided by the lot size, and then you get a number. And some communities put a number on it, 50%, 60%, 70%, and that's what you get in terms of how much square footage you get. But what FAR does, or floor area ratio basically does, is it regulates the volume of the house, basically the amount of square footage. But what it doesn't do, and I think the, the big difference in what the forms, the form-based approach that we're taking here, and this FAR approach, is that you could have a 2,500-square-foot house next to a 3,200-square-foot house, and the 2,500-square-foot house would look bigger to the person walking down the street. And the Single Family House Advisory Committee talked about this in great detail, and I know that a number of other communities in San Mateo County and the, in the area use floor area ratio as a volume, and I've used it myself as a city planner. But that, I think, in talking about how to reduce the bulk and mass, it's not the only way to do it, it's just one way to do it. People talked about daylight plan. I love the word daylight plan, it sounds good. I'm going to get daylight in, next to my house, and I, I like the concept of it, and in fact, we'll show you some diagrams and things. Under our current standards, we kind of have a daylight plan already, but there's some inherent issues with daylight plan, and Stefan is going to talk about that. Allowing two-story homes, allowing two-story homes next to single-story homes, there's some concern, I think we've heard it from the public, we heard it at the last Planning Commission study session. People are worried, because in the, particularly in the historic areas, the older neighborhoods, you'll get these older houses that were built in the 20s, 30s, and 40s, and then you've got somebody building a big two-story house, and it, and it does affect the appearance of the streetscape. And it's, it, it can be a very significant difference. So some people have asked, well, why can't we just do single-family, single-story homes? And our city attorney mentioned in the last meeting that there is a way for, for neighborhoods to do that, and you would have to vote to do that, and some communities do do it. One example is in Palo Alto, where you have the Eichler neighborhoods, I think some of the Eichler neighborhoods in Palo Alto have actually done that to try and preserve that style of architecture. But that would be the property owners that would need to agree to do that, not the city. In terms of protecting privacy and views, I think that what you'll see is that these proposed standards do improve light and air and privacy, particularly in the backyards. And main body and wings, what other cities regulate, main body and wings, it says it there, I'll let Stefan touch on that if necessary, and then let more neighbors know about applications for new homes and additions. And we are going to make some changes in the way we review new houses and big additions in our community. We have a design review committee, it's called the Residential Design Review Committee, and the city council recently made some pretty significant changes to the makeup of that group to improve the performance of that and to work more closely with the neighborhood and architects. There will be a professional architect on this committee. One of the suggestions that we will be making is to increase the, the notification to neighbors from 150 feet around the property to 300 feet around the property, things like that. So those are just some of my initial comments, and I think what I'm going to do is hand it over to Stefan to talk a little bit about some of the concerns from the local architects.
Thank you, Al. Good evening, Commissioner Bergman, excuse me, Chair Bergman, and members of the Planning Commission, and members of the San Carlos community. I'm Stefan Pellegrini from Optico's Design. I'm an architect and urban designer and a planner. We are, I'll start with sort of a review of some of the information that we went over with the local architects in two meetings, and then I'm going to talk with you a little bit about some of the proposals that we have been discussing around making changes to the RS6 zone. And I know that some of this is information that we had an opportunity to review in the last study session, but we have new members today, which is exciting and great, so look forward to speaking with you about this. Some of these items, we actually will touch on in the presentation this evening. Al mentioned concerns over FAR and daylight plan, and I will spend a little bit of time talking about that tonight. The architects had asked us for some additional flexibility in how we are approaching the standards, and we've had a chance to discuss that in more detail with the architects who have participated, and we will be sharing some ideas with you tonight about how we do think we can provide some more flexibility based on their recommendations. And I will touch on this as we sort of move forward in the presentation. Oh, that's great, it works. So just to reiterate from before, some key findings that we discovered during our initial fact-finding process and discussions with the Shack, which I think are important to recognize, is that the existing zoning envelope in the RS6 zone actually allows for houses that both look and feel large, and that the main control that we see being exerted today that's actually controlling the size of houses is actually the 50% maximum lot coverage requirement. And so that, if you can sort of imagine that, that is, the 50% lot coverage is generally controlling how big the house can be on one floor, and then you can go up a full another story once you've sort of established that, and that gets, lets you sort of arrive at the maximum square footage for, under the existing zoning standards. And what we, I think, have seen is that historically, the zoning envelope has always been considerably bigger than the size of houses that are built. But in recent years, we've seen more and more houses be built more closely to the zoning envelope. And what we also sort of have realized is that there are good and best-practice design features that we can integrate into the zoning standards that are actually not encouraged or possible today. And the Shack was sort of very interested and concerned in trying to understand how we could both combine standards that are more restrictive, but also provides for additional flexibility that would provide and incentivize better design. So we've shown these models before, these are some examples of the house that the zoning envelope describes or allows. And as I mentioned, what we, I think, sort of are increasingly realizing is that the actual houses that are being constructed are very similar to this zoning envelope. So these are some studies of the massing done on 50- and 60-foot lots. This is an existing built example that came up for discussion with the Shack many times as an example of a house that looked and felt too large. And you can see many of the features that, that are under the existing zoning that are contributing to this form. The second floor, that's slightly smaller than the first floor, a large percentage of the facade that actually is given over to a large two-car garage, and a very wide presence that takes up the sort of full setback to setback at the street. And this sort of started a conversation about how some of these things actually could be improved. So I'm going to review seven topics tonight, and I'm going to sort of do a brief overview, and then we do have some additional information that we can cover in more detail on any of these topics as we move through the content. And I will, many times, bring up some of the issues that both the public has raised and were raised with our two meetings with the architects, and try to communicate sort of how we're thinking about those right now. So we'll start with building size and massing, and just to sort of reiterate some of the problems that we've discussed to date, we've realized that we're getting large houses, and that as people are building to the full zoning envelope, and since the setbacks under the existing zoning are actually stepped, meaning that we have greater setbacks at the second floor than we do at the first floor, we tend to get houses that sort of have a wedding cake form when they're built to the full zoning envelope. And so one of the things that we actually wanted to sort of consider was the idea about introducing main body control, which Al had mentioned, to limit actually the two-story building footprint that would be allowable, and to actually introduce this concept of wings that would limit extensions into, resulting extensions into side and rear yards. And Al mentioned that the idea of a main body is something that some Bay Area cities have actually adopted and have been practicing for many years now, but it is a relatively new idea if we look at our neighbors on the peninsula. We had an opportunity to do some additional due diligence, we spoke to planners at the city of Livermore who adopted main body controls in several of the residential zone districts, actually about 10 years ago, and what they reported to us is that they actually have really appreciated this additional standard because they had a prime objective to limit and control what they referred to as mansionization in many of the residential neighborhoods, and they see this control on main body size as a primary factor in limiting mansionization in the neighborhoods where they've applied this control. So the main bodies, or if we wanted to define it, it's the principal one- or two-story mass of a house. The idea is that it can control the overall volume and size of the house that's proposed, it's sort of a smaller zoning envelope that would fit inside a larger zoning envelope. It would correspond to lot width, meaning that as you have a wider lot, you actually would be allotted a wider main body. And in discussions with the Shack, it was important that we actually set this main body control large enough that it could ensure a reasonable and sort of practical program on the second floor. And so we did set this dimension to ensure that a sort of three-bedroom, two-bath program on the second floor could be reasonably accommodated. Since the main body size is smaller than the overall zoning envelope, and the idea is that it's flexible in how it actually can be placed on the lot to respond to the location and the configuration of adjacent houses. And when I talk about the setbacks in more detail, I'll sort of demonstrate how that might work on the model. The idea behind wings is that these are actually smaller one- or two-story elements that project from the main body. So in this image, if you can imagine that the main body is outlined in the red rectangle, the wings actually would be areas that could project from that that are outlined in purple at the rear, the sides, and the front. The side wings can be utilized to break down the massing. The side wings can be utilized to break down the massing and provide additional square footage. They are optional. They do sort of provide an allowance to sort of build out in a limited way to the limits of the setbacks. But we sort of thought about how they could be best sized and controlled so that we could start to mitigate some of the issues that we believe are occurring when larger houses are actually proposed adjacent to smaller houses. And again, I'll try to talk about that in a little bit more detail. So this is sort of a summary of the main body controls that we are proposing. You can see that for very small lots, there actually would not be a main body width that would be proposed. And then as you go up from that, you actually sort of incrementally increase in width, up to a width of 42 feet. And there is a sort of typical main body depth of 45 feet. Why do we pick 45 feet? Because 45 feet is a good average of about how deep many houses in San, the main body of many houses in San Carlos is. It's sort of a conventional round number. Some are 36, some are 47, but it was sort of a reasonable place to sort of set an appropriate depth where we could ensure that new houses would not start to sort of adversely impact the rear yards of adjacent houses. And I can talk about that a little bit more. For wings, we actually are proposing a maximum width of 18 feet, and that they actually would have a requirement to be separated apart from each other, somewhere between 14 and 18 feet, so that the mass that actually is presented that can grow closer to the adjacent neighbor would be limited by the width, the width and depth of those wings. These are just sort of two very quick examples of existing houses in San Carlos that have a main body and wings that sort of follow some of these rules that are presented. The house on the left is sort of actually a representation of an existing house and a sort of a newer addition. But you can see sort of a main body that has a one-story wing that projects from the front. The house on the right is actually a much older house. You can see sort of a rectangular main body that actually has two wings that are projecting to the front. One of the things that we spoke about with the Shack was that this idea of making houses that are geometric shapes that can form U's or L's or C's could be a strategy to sort of help control massing as opposed to getting a house that is sort of full-on frontage against the sort of the existing setbacks. The second item I want to sort of talk about a little bit is garage placement and parking. As I mentioned, the zoning envelope is something that we build out to, and this is sort of the result that we see. The key factor here is that the existing standards allow 65% of the front facade to be garage. And when we asked folks in the community and when staff asked folks in the community to actually present and discuss some of the houses which they felt were too large, the two-car garage is, can be described as a significant element of every house that was actually proposed as being too large. So we wanted to sort of think about sort of how to control that. You can imagine on a 50-foot lot, when the 65% rule is triggered, that means that over 24 to 25 feet of the front facade can be garage. And the leftover is often not wide enough to actually present an actual room to the street. So we wanted to sort of think about actually how larger houses could actually start to present something to the street that actually can be broken down en masse and sort of not present sort of this large element. Our solution is to continue to maintain a two-car parking requirement. But actually, if you wanted to do two parking spaces in a garage, you would actually have a requirement to push them back from the main facade. We started with a 15-foot minimum setback. After discussion with the architects, we actually are thinking about 12 feet right now would actually be more appropriate. And on lots less than 60 feet wide, we'd like to introduce an option that you can have one car covered in a garage or a carport and one car parked in a driveway to meet the two-car parking requirement. There has been a lot of concerns about what this would do for on-street parking and sort of shuttling cars to the street. We do recognize that we do have a two-car parking and garage requirement today, but it's not enforced. And there is street parking that occurs today and will probably continue to be street parking that actually occurs in the future. We do know that comparatively, other cities on the peninsula is very common, it is more common to have a two-parking space requirement where only one has to be garaged than it is to have actually a two-car garage requirement. So we did feel this was a sort of good trade-off in order to reduce the mass. And some of the things that the community had identified were contributing to this idea of large houses in exchange for a little bit more flexibility in terms of what can happen on the garage front. So this, I sort of, I sort of already went over. The idea is to actually provide some flexibility. You can see on the far left of this drawing, a house that actually would have, could have one car in a garage and one car parked in a driveway. This would require the maintenance of driveways that are potentially 20 feet wide, which is sort of continuing the standard that we have today. There could be a tandem configuration, as shown in sort of the middle two. Or the garage could be set back either to the midpoint in the lot, 12 feet back from the front facade, or in concurrence with today's standards all the way to the rear. And I'd be happy to sort of talk about that a little bit more in detail. So now I'm going to talk a little bit about building setbacks, and I will give you sort of an overview. And then I'm going to sort of spend a couple of minutes on each of the front, side, and rear conditions so that we can start to understand the implications of what we're proposing. What we wanted to do here was that we recognized that the five-foot and nine-foot setbacks at the, at the sides, which were under the existing standards, creating these wedding cake forms, they were not necessarily effective in reducing the bulk and mass. So we wanted to think about how we could sort of mitigate that. We also recognized that the existing rear setbacks were allowing build-outs into the rear yard that could present a considerable impact on existing neighbors. And so we wanted to sort of understand how we could mitigate that a little bit. And so we're, in some cases, proposing an increase in setbacks from the existing standards. And in some places, we're sort of providing for a little bit more flexibility with regards to setbacks and how the main body can be placed within those setbacks. So this is a diagram that actually demonstrates the existing setbacks under the existing RS6 zoning. What we've done here is taken the same lot and we have rotated it three ways. So on the left-hand side, you're seeing it with the front of the lot to the left. In the middle, you see it with the front of the lot, actually to the bottom. And on the right, you see it with the front of the lot to the top. And, oh, great. Thank you very much. Oh, there it is. Okay. So, and underneath, we're showing a section through the zoning envelope. So this sort of represents, is representative sort of of the massing and the bulk of the house that you have allowed. And this actually shows a couple of things. The existing rear setback of 15 feet, it's typically your difficulty in sort of getting to that is that you'll hit your 50% lot coverage requirement before, before you reach that. So we're showing that this is actually possible, but you, your depth usually, if you're building from the front all the way to the back, and you have a limitation to be able to do that. The cross-section through here shows that at the second floor, we have a nine-foot setback. And at the first floor, we have a five-foot setback. But these actually can run the entire depth of the house, which can be considerably deep. And there is an existing provision that actually allows sort of a two-story encroachment that's 30% of the depth of that house to actually run all the way to that five-foot setback. So what you can see here in section is that behind, there's a wing, which actually is described up here, which is allowed. And the zoning standards don't say anything about where that can happen. So that means if you are this house's neighbor and your house ends right here, it's pretty easy for me to put a two-story element that's fronting onto your rear yard. So we want to sort of be considerate, considerate of that. So these are the proposed setbacks. So I can sort of flip back to that. Here's the existing envelope, and here's the proposed envelope. So the main body control is actually, it's really limiting how much two-story house can actually occur on the parcel.
So basically, the wings, right, only go to the setback, can go out to the setback, but not further?
That's correct.
Okay. And is the, the main body mat, I'm trying, I'm trying to say this, I guess what I'm trying to say is, do the wings in any way detract from the available main body dimensions or available, available building space?
They do not.
Okay.
Yep. So-
Explain that a little well, a little better, because I, that's important to know whether or not that actually affects, you know, the workable building space.
Yeah. So we're sort of thinking about this in an additive way, and I think we can think about this, that the, if the existing zoning, zoning envelope, which allows, where the, the primary control was, you could build until you hit the 50% lot coverage requirement, and then you can go up another floor, that was generally resulting in an FAR, a floor area ratio that was close to one, it's about .9, .95, and it was resulting in a, in a maximum lot coverage of 50%. When we impose these standards, we are generally seeing a reduction in FAR down to about .7. And we're seeing a reduction in lot coverage down to closer to 40, 40%.
Okay, I'm going to stop you right there. And just for the benefit of people in the audience, would you give a brief description of floor area ratio and percent lot coverage? Because I don't know if everyone is really, is clear on that.
Sure. So floor area ratio is a, is a planning term that represents the relationship between the total square footage of a house and the total square footage of the parcel that it sits on. And so if you have a 5,000 square foot lot and a 3,000 square foot house, that means there is a, an FAR of .6 or 60%.
And that can be, and that encompasses however many stories that there are in the house, right?
Yes.
Right? It's not just the main floor plan, it is, it is the total square footage in the house.
That's correct. And so in the case of San Carlos, since we can build two-story homes, I could accomplish that square footage in up to the height limit, which is today 27 feet.
Thank you.
So. Sorry, did you have another question?
Explain the percent, I mean, the, the percent.
Sure. So yeah, lot coverage, which is something I've mentioned a lot. Lot coverage is the percentage of a covered house, house that's enclosed by a roof, or would include also a porch that also has a roof on it, but would exclude something like an open deck. It's the ratio of that total square footage at the ground floor to the total square footage of a lot.
So you're looking at, like, if you were looking at an aerial view, it'd be the footprint of the aerial view, and does not take into account necessarily a second story, but just the footprint of the house, correct?
It doesn't take into account a second story, and it would not take into account any outdoor patio or deck that actually is not covered by a roof.
Thank you.
So 50% lot coverage means I could generally build a house on one floor that is 2,500 square feet. So I don't know if I can switch over to the model real quick, but just to sort of give you guys sort of a demonstration. Can I carry this over? No. All right. I'll talk and then I'll show you. What I'm going to show you is that the, so the gray models that you see are representative of the existing zoning envelope. And the red-colored models that you see are actually representative of the zoning envelope, which we are proposing. So if we look at this sort of model here, this recalls some of the things that I've mentioned, that the second, the first floor can be bigger than the second floor. The house can be built as deep as you can to the limitations of that 50% lot coverage. So a good thing to sort of keep in mind is that on a general sort of 100-foot lot, there's generally about 70 feet of building area that you can sort of, you could place along your setback line if you can manage sort of the lot coverage requirement. And this shows that there is 30% of the depth of that house where I get to encroach on that second floor setback. So for the most of the house, the setback is at nine, but for about 18 feet, which is about 30% of 70, I get to sort of go the full length. So, and this is representative of what we were talking about, sort of on a similar lot, the main body would actually be controlled by width, which in this case would be 32 feet, understanding that on the same parcel, today I could build a house that actually would be 40 feet wide. And the depth of the second story, of the two-story form would be limited to 45, whereas today, again, if I can manage my lot coverage requirement, I could build up to 70 feet deep. So there is sort of a limitation and control in the main bulk and size of the house.
So, just for clarification, the way that I read, I have this thing here, the way that I read the zoning proposal is that we would have, there'd actually, no matter how deep your lot is, right, whether it's, you know, however, however deep it is, the depth of the house would not be able to exceed 45 feet. Is that correct?
The depth of the main body.
Of the main body.
Yeah.
Okay. So wings can succeed by 18 feet out the back if we wanted to, depending on lot size.
So what this one shows is that off the back here, I can extend a wing. And this wing is 18 feet wide. And it shows that on the first floor, I can actually do a deeper wing than I can on the second floor. And I would have to place this, if it's two stories, behind the main body, at nine feet from the side instead of five. So I'm controlling essentially how much of the two-story mass I can actually put in the rear yard in the place where I'm sort of concerned that actually might be of greatest concern sort of for the neighbor. And then what this also shows is that I can build side wings off of that main body to the limitations of that five-foot setback that actually would be generally 14 to 18 feet spaced apart from each other.
And can you explain to me the difference between this gray square and the white square, the white lines?
Yes. The white lines actually are representative, you're talking about this line right here?
Yeah.
The white line is representative of the setback at the second floor.
A second floor setback, okay.
And the purple line is representative of the setback at the first floor.
Thank you.
Sorry, I just ruined the whole house. There we go.
So Stefan, the-
Yes, John.
So on the, the rear wing, what's driving the second floor being smaller is solely the setback. There's nothing else driving that?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah. So, and I'll go through the sort of the rear yard setbacks in a sec. Can you remind me how to switch back? I'm sorry.
Stefan.
Yeah.
One other, while you're on the proposed model there. On the side of this particular lot that is in the five-foot zone, where you're going to have two full stories at that setback, was there any discussion about retaining some amount of second floor additional setback to give some kind of a step look and not just have a big wall?
Yes, there was. And it might be best to talk about that in the context of the daylight plane discussion, which we can get to shortly. So we talked about front yards. Front yards are actually staying the same at 15. But what we would allow that's different from today is that a wing that's two stories could actually come all the way to that 15-foot setback. Today, we have a 15-foot first floor requirement and a 19-foot second floor requirement. One of the reasons why I want to think about that is allowing a house that actually is an L shape at the front facade, sort of a Gable L prototype to actually be created, which is actually not allowed under the existing zoning standards. So here's the proposed, again, existing and proposed on the front side. When we look at the side, as I mentioned, today we have five on the first floor, nine on the second floor. What we're proposing in the future is five, a sort of minimum, on one side. But your additional setback would be engendered by the fact that you, your main body width actually has to fit inside that larger zoning envelope.
And I can talk a little bit more in detail when we talk about daylight plane, about what this means. The short is that what we would love to do here is provide some flexibility where if you are proposing a two-story house, you can talk to your neighbor before you design that house and come to an agreement about what's best for both of you. And that there do appear to be conditions based on how existing houses in San Carlos are built, where it actually might make sense to push the house over to one side. But there are plenty of conditions where it makes sense to put that main body right in the middle of the property, which actually should give you the same or better of a condition than you actually have today under the existing standards.
But, in this drawing that you just had, one neighbor can't tell the other neighbor where they're going to put the house, as long as it's within the setback limits, right? I mean, they can't say, you know, your neighbor just doesn't have that kind of control over the house.
That's true, but
if the main body's placement is flexible and projects are up for design review, shifting of that main body within the zoning envelope could be something that the RDRC could, could consider as a criteria to minimize impacts. So, again, we're, we do think this presents a level of flexibility that could be beneficial.
Yeah, I understand the flexibility, I just wanted to be really clear on on what the law would allow neighbors to do as far as where you want to place your house.
Sure. So, just to sort of close out, sort of the rear setback, the existing setback is actually set at 15 for the first and second floor. And we're proposing 20 at the first floor and 25 at the second floor, so this is the existing, and then that is the proposed. And you can see the additional space in white between the main body depth and the rear wing, which would provide additional rear yard space under the new proposed standards. So here's existing.
Can, can you just go back, so you're saying that what is in white, I'm sorry, in the next slide, I think?
Yes.
What is in white would not be built on?
Right, and what I do have flexibility here is that this wing, which is gonna, is this dimension is set, and this minimum setback over here, if it's two stories, is set, but this guy could slide anywhere in here. Just like this guy could slide anywhere in here. So, but I cannot, on most lots, and I can get into that in a little bit more detail later, I would not be able to build out this whole area with house.
Neither could you make the main body bigger, correct?
No. Okay, so a little bit about daylight plane. We provided a definition of daylight plane, is it is a height limitation that when combined with a height limit defines the building envelope. So, a daylight plane is a tool that planners use to set some limitations on the profile of a house or a building. Daylight planes are utilized in some peninsula cities, some of, some of your neighbors use this, not all of them, but some of them do. And the way they use it sort of differs. But if we generally sort of try to sum that up into one sort of generally approach, they typically are defining an envelope, a zoning envelope that's set between 10 and 22 feet above the side property line at a 45-degree angle to the height limit, and I have a diagram to sort of try to explain this to you. The existing RS6 standards, as, as Al mentioned, they do emulate sort of a daylight plane standard. When you see in other communities that where the second floor setback is greater than the first floor setback at the sides, those are emulating a daylight plane. So, as I mentioned, cities don't all use this in the same way. But this blue line, if you can imagine, this is a cross-section through a parcel. This blue line is generally representative of a daylight plane that other cities impose. The reason why we generalize this is because it's not an apple-to-apple situation, for example Palo Alto sets that line at 10 feet. So you can imagine that this part of the triangle, instead of here, is actually down here. But they allow buildings to be 33 feet tall. And so they're limiting how much you can do on the side, but they're ultimately allowing a much taller building at the middle of the property. So it's difficult to say, oh, well Palo Alto says, you know, 10 and 45, so we should do that, because everybody is sort of approaching the zoning envelope in a different way. Where you see the number get really high, those cities are generally, they are controlling the form of the roof. They're making sure that the roof actually does not get too tall, and they actually also might be controlling things that go on the roof, like dormers and other things that can sort of increase the mass of the house. Most cities also exert this, but they all have some exception. They say, well, here, you have to be under this daylight plane, but a percentage of dormers might be exempt, or a percentage of the house actually might be exempt from this requirement. And so what you have today is sort of emulating this, because you have the nine-foot setback at the second floor, you have the five-foot at the first floor, but you have this allowable area that can encroach, this 30%, which does not sort of meet that daylight plane standard. So we chose the 16 because of sort of a general average for sort of what we're trying to achieve, and we wanted to kind of give you this information and sort of show you how these standards actually might react to this concept of daylight plane. The thing that I sort of, that we've discussed internally and discussed with architects, and one of the reasons why we're wary of imposing a daylight plane, is that it establishes the sort of a minimum slot, which is a space you can imagine from side yard setback to side yard setback along between your house and your neighbor's house. It establishes a minimum slot, but how much sun and when you get sun in that slot actually depends on many other factors that it doesn't control, because it depends on the orientation of your lot. It depends to a great extent to the amount and nature of landscaping on your property or your neighbor's property. It depends on the positioning of adjacent structures. And so a daylight plane in and of itself actually doesn't present something that can can guarantee light and air at the side yard setback. We're also concerned about this because if we look at two parcels adjacent to each other, you can see that that slot is not great. It doesn't sort of, if you think about sort of the space between two buildings, right, where we're talking about 10 feet at the ground level between buildings that actually might be 70 feet deep, it's difficult to think about that as a high-quality space. Even if it's two one-story houses adjacent to each other, we have some, you can tell I'm expressing some skepticism about the effectiveness of a daylight plane.
I'm not clear on, I mean, you say 45-degree angle, but what, what 45-degree angle are you referring to? Could you show me on the model what you're talking about?
Yeah, I can show you here, if you look at the blue line on this diagram. And so, cities that have a daylight plane, if you look at the standard, it will say a line drawn at a 45-degree angle from the side property line at a certain elevation, which in this case is somewhere between 10 and 20 feet based on the city. And so you draw a 45-degree angle in towards the center of the lot, up to the height limit, which in the case of San Carlos is 28 feet, and so that blue line that's sort of representing like a trapezoid, it's basically saying that the bulk of the house needs to fit underneath that line.
Okay, thank you.
So. So, we understand that sort of not, it doesn't solve everything, and that this issue about minimum side yards providing a reasonable exposure to sunlight, that the daylight plane, it doesn't, in and of itself, we're skeptical about its ability to sort of solve that problem. And so we want to sort of think more carefully about this before sort of we would impose this kind of standard.
Does a daylight plane sort of blow your wings out of the water?
Well, not necessarily, because I mentioned, most cities allow exemptions. They never say everything has to fit under this envelope, they say, well, almost everything needs to fit under this envelope, and here's some things that actually can actually protrude beyond this envelope. So, what we have up here, which I sort of wanted to illustrate, is that your existing standards, as I mentioned, they basically emulate a daylight plane, because at the second floor, there is a greater setback at the side, nine feet. And so you can see how the house fits under that blue dotted trapezoid. But of course, you can still do two-story wings for a percentage of the depth, which can be built outside of that envelope, and that is in keeping with how other cities think about daylight plane. What we're proposing is a main body control that is actually set to fit under a similar standard if you put it in the middle of the property. So, if you can sort of stay with me here for a second. If you have a 50-foot lot and you have a main body width of 32 feet, and you put that in the middle of the property, you actually have in, you have 18 feet divided by two, you have nine feet on either side of that main body. If you put it in the middle, you are generally presenting a similar approach to that slot. If you build side wings off of that, you actually are encroaching under that daylight plane in a similar way. What you're not doing, which you're doing today, is you would not be allowed to build on both sides of your lot for the full depth of your zoning envelope. Because as today, right, if my main factor is lot coverage, I could put 70 feet of house along that five-foot setback on both sides of my property. In this case, I'm limited by the main body depth and whatever I actually can add with regards to wings, and so that generally will increase the amount of side yard. It doesn't mean that I will have, won't be able to have portions of the house that can encroach that five feet, but it means that, if I can flip back to this for a sec and show in the model. Sorry, I have too much equipment here, I apologize.
That, instead of having this condition, where I could build all the way to one side, I might have, on one condition, have a situation where I have some pieces that actually are at five feet, but I might have a larger side yard that makes a C or sort of another form, where this actually setback between houses could potentially be increased. Again, what I mentioned is that if that's not going to work out for my neighbor, I could put this house in the middle and present this second floor massing the same way as this one is, and then I would be allowed to build wings actually into that setback, and I could do these wings on both sides, and I'm positive that I don't have enough of these, but you can imagine I could do this on this side, and I could do this as well on this side, and this is actually, again, generally presenting the same strategy as this, but I'm further limiting how much I can actually build the house out at the ground floor, because I'm not allowing this to actually happen anymore.
But if you were to push that house to the right, to the gray line, then you wouldn't be able to put wings there?
If I put the house here, yep, I wouldn't be able to, I would not be able to put wings here, but I could put wings on that side. So, it's a bit of a trade-off, because I'm saying previously I could do this for 70 feet at the first floor, but now I can only do it for 45 feet on two floors. Previously, I could put this part of my second story all the way back within 15 feet of the rear property line, which invariably is going to have an impact on my neighbor's yard. And today, I can't do that anymore, but the trade-off is I actually can put two-story massing much closely more related to the massing of my neighbor's likely house. So we're sort of trying to kind of think about how we can sort of best address some of these issues. Again, what we're thinking is that this would not be a requirement. It would create a possibility to provide some additional flexibility, and there could be a condition to slide this guy over, where my neighbor this is a condition we see in San Carlos a lot. My neighbor actually has a rear-loaded garage, and they have a greater setback on the side. And they may actually have the sort of kitchen and private side of the house here, and the sort of more public amenities on the other side. And it actually may make sense to do this, and I'm still actually maintaining the same distance between houses as I would if I put everybody at the setback. If you can go back to the other diagram, I'm sorry, I didn't realize that this one actually collapsed, sorry. So I was showing that here in the bottom one here. So my neighbor actually might have a garage, and their house actually might already be shifted to one side. So if I put this house all the way over, I'm maintaining 18 feet between houses, which is actually a very similar dimension to other configurations where my neighbor's house might be in the middle, and I'm proposing a house in the middle. So again, because we don't, we have many situations today where this neighbor, we don't have the ability for a house to actually adjust based on the context that it actually has around it, or you definitely don't have a way to say there's criteria that you should consider to allow that adjustment to occur to make things more context-sensitive, so that's what we are trying to get at here.
Stefan, I had a question on wing size, how did you come to a maximum wing width of 18 feet? Is that like an average bedroom size, or like, how did you think of that?
So, 18 feet is pretty generous. We can think about, typical bedroom might start at 11 to 12 feet in width. Master bedroom might be closer to 16. So we set 18 based on the fact that when we look at houses that utilize this massing strategy, the wings actually are typically formed around one room. And so we thought that 18 was a generous standard to allow for that to occur. What it means in a floor plan, again, if you are, have a main body that can already accommodate a reasonable practical program, it means that you could use that wing to actually extend, so you actually could create a master suite, or you know, could be a master bath suite that comes off of a master suite that actually could fit within that general program.
I see, and then, you know, if you just look at this from the perspective of anyone trying to, you know, maximize their space, I mean, has it, I think we can safely assume people will generally apply for two wings, and is that the, I mean, is that useful space? I mean, the like gap between the wings, I'm just trying to think, is there any unintended consequence of just having two wings with, you know, just a sort of dead space on the side of a house? I guess that's my question is, how, I, are we all comfortable with pretty much every application? I think we'll call for two wings now, and I, we just should be aware of that, I suppose.
Yeah, generally we looked at that dimension so that if you were adding wings to the width, you would generally get one, as the houses get bigger, or the main body size gets wider, you would be able to do two. This would be sort of of maximum size, so you can imagine if you needed to maintain space between wings and you had a wide front facade, and you, you could make those wings smaller, right, so you could have two 14-foot wings with space in between that would sort of meet the standards. Generally, when we think about the depth, you could fit two wings along that space, but again, there would be sort of no requirement. What we believe is that we are setting the main body size to actually be relative to a reasonably sized square footage house that could be proposed. And so, there would be no requirement that you sort of need to capture that additional square footage. There definitely, as you said, would be an incentive for you to do so, but we wanted to sort of make sure that when that was done, it didn't just result in the, again, the full build-out to the zoning envelope, which is one of the problems that you appear to be having now.
Got it, and then are there restrictions on the number of wings? I mean, you can put two on a side, one in the back?
It would be based on the dimensions that you have, and so, in terms of the spacing between wings. And we've generally set a number between 14 and 18, we started with 18. The architect said, could you put them closer together, we think that's too restrictive. So we're considering even down to 14 now. But again, since if you only have 45 feet of depth- But again, since if you only have 45 feet of depth in the main body, there's going to be a limit to how many that you could do.
Right. Yeah, I mean, the answer would be two. I mean, if you take 45 feet, take 14 out of it, you have 31 feet. So you can't even do an 18-foot wing if you're going to do two wings. I think you're stuck with 17 and 14 at that point.
Yeah.
So I would expect nearly every house then we would see would be 45-foot main body with a 17-foot and a 14-foot wing. And we're pretty much calling that out as, you know, what anyone would do. And are we concerned that, you know, that, that strikes me as pretty restrictive in a way that we're going to end up with kind of one style of house. It's going to be the San Carlos two-wing, 17-foot, 14-foot wing, pretty much defined.
That's, I mean, that is possible. It's clearly, it's clear that many architects have found a way to deliver a San Carlos house today under the existing zoning. It's always difficult to understand how these standards actually might be interpreted. We, again, I would sort of go back to say that there are floor plan prototypes that are T-shaped, or C-shaped, or L-shaped, which are very common in neighborhoods that have houses of modest size, and that we would hope that this kind of standard would allow for a wide range of those configurations to be produced. But it is definitely possible that you would start to get one choice over others. It's, I think it's difficult to sort of ascertain what the impact of that might be right now.
Okay.
Why, I don't know, maybe Al can answer this. But when you're limiting the depth of the, of the main body to 45 feet regardless of the lot length, lot depth. So why, or did you consider having the depth of the main body adjust proportionately to the lot depth? Why are we clipping? Because at a certain point, you're going to start affecting home values if you only allow a certain size. I mean, we don't have to go with McMansions, but I mean, when you get up into those higher lot sizes and you're clipping it at 45 feet depth, I'm not, that sort of doesn't quite seem right. I mean, we need to protect, we need to protect our current homeowners, but people that aren't here are future homeowners who will be members of our community and will want the best house value that they can get. So I'm wondering why we didn't adjust it proportionally.
There's some adjustments in here, and Stefan can talk more about it. But the idea was to limit the second-floor mass. And the 45-foot would allow for a three-bedroom, two-bath configuration floor plate on the top every time that we laid it out and did the floor plan. So that was the minimum that we talked about at the shack. And what we also talked about was allowing the first floor then to expand out. So it would still allow somebody, if they had a real big lot, to expand beyond that main body, but only on the first floor. And Stefan, I think, has a graphic showing that. The shack wanted to incentivize folks with the big lots to do more single-story development. And so there are some incentives built in to do that.
Thank you.
So there's just a few more items to cover here, which we had a chance to talk about last time. The summary on building height is that we are proposing to maintain the 28-foot maximum height. But to actually establish a new height to the highest eve, which would essentially control how tall houses are at the eve. And I have a diagram to sort of show that. We also today have actually a pretty considerable allowable height for one-story houses. And the shack's discussion centered around the fact that that is actually, you can still do a pretty tall one-story house that would potentially present some impacts with the neighbors. So we wanted to sort of receive if we could refine and revise that. And then we also sort of discussed basements, because there were several houses that we discussed in the community where the basement was starting to feel like a third floor, particularly on one side if there was some slope that was involved. So this is summary of what we're proposing. Right now, there's not a number of stories specified, but we're proposing to specify two stories max. For a one-story building, the existing height is 25, and we're proposing to lower that to 20. But actually, to lower it to 16 feet to the top of plate. So you can imagine if a one-story house had a roof, the eve height, when I say eve, I mean generally where the gutter is or where the roof starts and the wall ends, would be limited to 16 feet. For a two-story building, the existing height of 28 feet would be maintained, but we would actually introduce a new height limit of 25 feet, again, to the top of plate or parapet. So you can see the difference between A and B, how these standards are actually described here. Introducing this new B, you would actually start to sort of lower how the, the height of the houses in terms of how they actually appear from the street in relation to their neighbors. And what we want to do for basements is actually more clearly define the basement to avoid a three-story appearance. And so what that means is that we want to limit basement exposure to three feet. When basements are actually exposed more than three feet, they actually would be considered to be a story. So we want to sort of control that. But there are some exceptions to that and some other exceptions that we should discuss. The first one, which we talked about at length, was concerns that these standards would actually create too many hardships for folks that actually have properties in the hillside overlay. And the hillside overlay actually applies to lots in, residential lots in San Carlos that actually have a certain percentage of slope. And the existing R6 standards actually provide for a lot of flexibility in how those standards are applied, understanding that you just can't simply do the same things on these lots as you can in other locations. So what we want to sort of communicate here is that the primary drivers that are controlling form in the hillside overlay would actually not be changed. When we look at sort of how parking is proposed, requirements for additional garage setbacks that we've been discussing, for example, would not apply in the hillside overlay. There are additional provisions for overall height to exceed 28, actually go to 35 feet. And we're not proposing to change that as part of these changes. And there are new standards that we have put into place. One, to control that issue of basement exposure. And two, again, to sort of control the height of the house in relationship to the eve line and what the house looks like at the roof form.
Stefan, if I might interrupt Mr. Chairman, too. I just wanted to note that I, before the meeting, I was talking to two ladies in the front here, and one of them showed me a picture on her iPhone about this exact situation where there was a hillside. And, you know, people are concerned about when you look up from the rear of a, of a large home and you're the house down below, under the current standards, because of that six-foot difference on that, on that, on the bottom of the hill there, it looks like a third story currently under the current conditions. And so the ladies were asking me, well, how was, how would you change the hillside areas, you know, to make those houses look smaller, particularly at the rear? And so these two standards would control that, that appearance at the bottom to make it, you know, lower. So the house would actually have to step more down the grade. So right, if you can imagine, if there's a slope like that, that as you get down the hill, the top of the floor, you know, the floor plate would have to go lower into the ground. And they would have to bury the house more into the ground to achieve this, thus making that back look lower. Thank you.
The other issue is one that Al had mentioned previously, which is that on narrow lots, in this case, lots that are 49 feet or in width or less, we want to provide a provision where a full build-out of the rear portion of the zoning envelope would be allowed. So you can imagine on lots that were wider, where we would be limited to this 45-foot main body depth. Once I go beyond that, I would actually be limited to this sort of wing size. The shack felt it was really important that we allow and encourage the expansion of one-story home, particularly one-story homes in San Carlos that are on narrow lots that would otherwise be constrained from making additions. And so in this condition, we actually want to sort of encourage a full build-out of the rear. We understand that there were sort of kitchen and great-room renovations that actually are really, they are accommodated in a pretty sort of wide addition out the back. These lots are actually very constrained in terms of their size and where you can go. And these are many houses that the way they were built, it is very difficult to add a second story to the existing foundation. And so we determined that actually it would be very important to sort of allow these additions to continue. So the maximum main body depth would only apply on lots that are 50 feet and greater in width. 49 and below, you would be allowed to build out at the rear to the full extent of the zoning envelope. We're still increasing the rear yard setbacks from what we see today, but you would be allowed that full build-out at the rear. So I touched on this at the beginning. We ran some sort of resultant calculations, again, when we think about the square footage of the zoning envelope. And our findings are generally this. And sort of on the left, we see the existing standards that are presented. On the right, we see the resultant calculations when we say how much square footage could fit inside the zoning envelope that we're proposing. This, to clarify, these numbers include the total amount that you could fit in the main body and the total amount that you could fit in all of your wings and a garage, whether it is attached, connected to the house, or detached. And the existing standards show the same, what you could sort of put in the existing zoning envelope. So we generally are considering a reduction in lot coverage of about 10%. And we know that the lot coverage standard in San Carlos for quite a while was 40% before it was increased to 50% in the previous changes to, to the zoning code. We have a pretty high FAR that's allowed under the existing zoning. This is a resultant FAR. FAR is not controlled today on residential in the R6 zone. But if you are achieving 50% lot coverage, you can achieve close to an FAR of one. And that generally is landing around 0.7 to 0.75 when we look at the resultant calculations of these new densities. We looked at this for a range of square footages and a range of house sizes. We sort of wanted to make sure that we were getting the right amount of, the right kind of data in terms of what we see. And so you can sort of generally see lot coverages are ranging 39 to 41%. FARs, 0.69 to 0.78. So just to close, we went back to this house, and I started to sort of bring this up at the previous presentation. And I do want to say, this actually is quite a nice house. It does have elements that folks on the shack agreed were contributing to this issue of house size. So I don't want to beat on, beat up on this too much. But if we impose these kinds of standards, generally, we would see some dimensional reductions in what would be proposed. And there is another argument or a discussion that we can have about house design. But we did sort of want to demonstrate that if we imposed main body controls, for example, on this kind of house, we would see a general reduction in the size of the house that's presented out the street from 50 feet down to about 36 feet. We would generally see a reduction in the amount of house that is attributed to garage at the front facade from about 24 to 26 feet down to probably 14 feet. And we would see the mass of, a portion of the house shifted back sort of away from this plane to actually sort of, again, present a little bit less mass sort of as you can sort of see it from the street. So we did this sort of as experiment. The architecture, as I mentioned, is another layer, which would sort of be required to sort of think about this. But this did start to suggest some things that the standards actually might be generating or meeting some of the issues that actually are contributing to house size. So there's the existing, and there sort of is the proposed model there shown in a rendering. So one last piece is processing and review that I touched on is that we're thinking about this in tandem with how the RDRC actually might be considering and reviewing projects. But also, staff's ability to work with applicants to interpret, and in some cases, provide relief on how some of these standards would be imposed. So some of the things that we've discussed are relaxing processing requirements for basements. Right now, it's actually very difficult to put square footage in a basement. What we are seeing in other high-value communities in the peninsula is that there is a push to put some of that square footage underground in a way that actually lessens the impact on neighbors. Right now, from a procedural standpoint, that actually is not so easy in the city of San Carlos. So we want to think about how that actually might be relaxed. There is a section in this zoning code that speaks to design review criteria in terms of requiring compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood. And it doesn't say anything about what that means. So we think it's actually really important that as part of this effort, criteria could be made more robust to empower staff and the RDRC to help make good decisions about what, what sort of design decisions actually result in more increased compatibility. We also want to think about strengthening the professional capabilities of the residential design review committee, figuring out a way to sort of incorporate and include additional professionals who can help facilitate a discussion about design. We'll need to require new definitions that actually are included in the zoning code today. And then from the relief side, as Al mentioned, sort of a couple of things. One was actually to consider certain incentives that single-story houses could actually have. And that actually might mean that any single, one example could be that any single-story house could be exempt from, or proposal could be exempt from RDRC review. And another one is that we could introduce types of ways or waivers, which would be considered to be minor dimensional relief from certain standards that staff could actually review and approve as part of accommodating things like oddly-shaped lots or special cases, or problems that actually might be presented in trying to apply to some of these more prescriptive standards.
I have a question about how the new zoning standards would be applied in that they create the possibility of responding to the local context that would be beneficial to the neighborhood. But the zoning code itself doesn't create that requirement. So if the home builder wants to optimize internal configuration to the detriment of the positioning relative to the neighbor, that would have to be handled as a, at the RDRC. And they would, so they would be within the zoning code. So then how do you impose a more acceptable solution for the neighbors?
Yeah, there could be some criteria that are introduced that actually might talk about. For example, if you see backyards or rear yard setbacks that are presented, that are somewhat consistent in your context, the RDRC actually might ask you to maintain or honor, to some extent, you know, the setbacks that actually your neighbors actually might propose. What we're thinking about primarily is that if we set a main body dimension that can be placed flexibly within the zoning envelope and provide some criteria to demonstrate compatibility with neighbors, you could shift that main body within the zoning envelope and still meet the requirements of the zoning. But the RDRC might have certain criteria that they could consider, which would allow that actually to take place. Right now, there is often a discussion around privacy. And right now, that usually is solved with fencing or landscaping or sort of other things. There is often a discussion about trying to understand the layout of the proposed house against the layout of the neighbor's house and sort of where there might be windows that line up and sort of other elements. This could create a situation or a condition where the RDRC could at least request or ask or discuss an opportunity for things to be shifted to provide additional relief. Or you, it could still be about landscaping and sort of other buffering, but it should give you a little bit more teeth, again, to sort of shift the main body of the house to sort of be context-sensitive. We continue to believe and sort of at least hope that what this means is that there can be a discussion with neighbors before the house is actually designed. And that's challenging to sort of promote, but it seems to be an important element to try to promote. try to promote.
That would probably happen 90% of the time in San Carlos, but there is that 10% where, or maybe somebody is not interested. And so if they bring forward a plan that works within the zoning code, the RDRC would be able to say, no, no, you need to move your wing X number of feet. I mean, that, we're not stuck.
Yeah, and so the, the way, yeah, again, if the, if the zoning standards are presenting a flexible range, then there could be parameters to shift things within that flexible range. It would not be possible for them to say, you have a setback of 15 and I'm going to impose a, and, and the allowed setback is 15 and I'm going to impose a setback of 25. But if you have a smaller envelope that you can shift around, there could be some provisions to actually move that without exceeding the standards that are presented.
The RDRC can't override the zoning standards, because it's the bottom line, right? Everything still needs to be within the existing standards.
That's correct.
Okay. So the RDRC's judgment is somewhat subjective, and so there would be give and take. It seems like we're setting up for, if I come with my plan and then the RDRC says, no, you need to move, move this wing by three feet, then I have to pay my architect to redo the, substantially redo the design. So is there a provision being made to have perhaps a more facile iterative review process or get early feedback from the city that would make this less painful?
Yes. Currently, you would work with the city staff first, and, and a lot of times, that's what happens. And then what happens at the RDRC is the city staff would make a recommendation to the RDRC. The city staff, knowing the new standards, could look at the streetscape, look at the neighborhood context and say, well, you know, this person is closer on this side and this person is farther away, you should consider this. That's what the RDRC is going to be looking for. And that's the, how we try and get there before we even get to the RDRC. Most of the time, we do. Like you said, 90, 95%. And then the times where staff may disagree with an applicant, we take it to the RDRC and they arbitrate.
Stefan, I have heard a lot of concerns about how this will apply to, to steeper hillside lots. And have, has there been any formal study on, you know, I, I keep seeing rectangles, I keep seeing flat lots in all of the examples and study. Have you formally studied any typical hillside lots and exactly how it plays out?
We, we have had an opportunity to look at some recent proposals as case studies. We did that with staff. We also did a little bit of that iteratively with the architects that we've had a chance to meet with. We haven't yet found any situations where these kinds of standards would present a hardship on lots in the hillside overlay area, largely because we want to maintain a similar degree of flexibility that is found today. There, that's not to say that everything that has been proposed in the past would be allowed, because these main body controls would, in many situations, start to limit the mass that actually might be presented. We did look, we have, we have an open call for lots that actually may have slope that presents hardship but are not in the hillside overlay area today, where shifting a garage or, or meeting a garage setback would become a hardship. We have not found any yet where that actually is a condition. That's not to say that they don't exist. But the, we do feel that these standards actually can be accommodated within the large range of lots that we see in San Carlos.
I have a comment. I'm not sure if these houses make, are part that make your criteria, but, I mean, a lot of this stuff that we're focusing on, what's really downtown in the flats. And there's a whole other part of San Carlos up on Crestview. And there's two houses right now on Club and Crestview. I mean, it was a lot split and there's two big houses on, and it fits perfectly within that area. If we were to impose the limitations that are in what we're proposing to the houses up in Crestview, I don't think they would, I think that would be, I don't think that would be good knowing that area. So I think we discussed at some point having some kind of neighborhood zoning or whatever. And I'd like to understand that better, because I don't think, I'm still not decided on whether this makes sense down in the flats, but up on top of Crestview, I really don't think it would work. I think you'd, I think you'd be taken away from, from the value of the neighborhood and the value of the homes by limited that much, because those are big houses up there on small lots with a little bit of landscaping.
Yeah, through the chair. So generally, staff is in agreement with what you just said. And so what we've started to look at, and even though we've gone through a number of different scenarios where we looked at odd configurations, we looked at triangular shaped lots and some sloped lots and, but when you get into the grades that are in excess of 19, 20%, what happens is you have to, you have to push your garage either to the front of the lot on a sloping lot. It always ends up right at the street. Or if you're, you're on the bottom of a hill, still your garage is always going to be at the front. So that creates an inherent kind of limitation for these standards, because we're trying to get that mass away from the front, and you kind of can't do it on the real sloped lots. So what we're looking at now, and I think that's on the screen right now, is only introducing a couple of new standards to the hillside areas. And so people have been asking the question and talking about, well, maybe this doesn't apply, shouldn't apply to the whole city. And, and I think that we're in agreement that on the lots where you, we call it a hillside overlay zone, anything over 19%, that these bulk, these kinds of standards would not apply. It would still be the same hillside overlay standards that we have now with a couple of new provisions and the, and, and also the RDRC provisions and processing things where, you know, we can look at privacy and some other things. But these two, that, that, at the bottom right-hand corner, I think the reason I talked about the folks that spoke with me this evening is they're, they identified something that's very common, is you see something that looks like three stories at the bottom of a hill. And, and it's usually that basement. And then that first story, limiting the first story to a certain height, too. So we think that with these two new standards, that will, that will reduce that scale and massing appearance on those hillside lots. So what we're looking at now is that the next time we come to you is to show you a map. We have, we can work with some geographic information systems and stuff and, and show it on a map where the lots are, we think, that are in excess of 19%. So anything less than that, we believe that these standards could generally apply. Anything more than that, we think you're right.
Maybe the two houses I'm thinking of that are probably the, maybe the only two in San Carlos that I think would be restrictive. I'm not sure, but they're the one, the two houses, the result of the, right at, right at Crestview and Club. And those are relatively flat lots. So, because there's a little flat area around that. So, I mean, I don't know if we make zoning standard to, for, to make sure those two houses are okay. I mean, they're already built, but I just want to make sure that that's considered, because there is a flat land right there, up there. So would you, would you just look at those two homes? Well, there is a hill, but I mean, that area up on top is pretty flat, right? I mean, the houses aren't being built on a, on a big slope. I mean, because they're at the top or the peak of the, anyway.
And so what we're saying is that if you have a lot that's even though it's up on the top of Crestview and it's a flat lot, you'd still have to go through this. But if your lot is in excess of 19%, then you have these other standards that would apply. So it's kind of like a two-zone system based on the slope of your particular lot. But generally, we can kind of map out where the slope is in our community and kind of tell where this is, would occur.
I see. So just to be clear, Al, as I read the hillside overlay, it's, it's, you know, all the normal zoning codes apply, and then the hillside overlay adds more restriction. So this would be in addition to the hillside overlay that specifically says these new standards do not apply. Is that correct?
Yeah, we'll, we'll figure that out. You, you make a good point. We were just saying, we got to figure out where to put that. But yes, we would add these two particular standards to the, I think they're pretty good standards for anywhere. And do you agree, Stefan, the three-foot?
Yeah.
In the, in the one on the lower right? But in particular, it might be that we insert that into the hillside overlay as well specifically.
I see.
Yeah.
I see. Because, so just to be clear, the garage standard, there's no intent to have that apply to hillside overlay lots?
Right. They can still, right, that's correct. You can still have a garage right at the front of your house because of the unusual slope and cost. I mean, the costs are tremendous to build a retaining wall and thing like, things like that to move it around. So we're perfectly fine with leaving that garage up at the front of the lot.
Because in particular, the two-car garage as well, because the, the comment on it's okay if the tandem parking provides spillage out into the street, a lot of our hillside streets are no parking on the streets, for example. And the whole jockeying of cars around is more troublesome on a steep street. Think about coming in and out of a driveway on a Crestview where people are going rather fast. That would be a concern. So I'm relieved to hear we're not planning to apply that to those lots. But some of those lots are flat. They just happen to be up in the hills and still on streets with no street parking. So I do think we need to carefully consider what it is to require tandem parking and only one car parking on streets that have no street parking or might be busy and higher speed limit thoroughfares that would require jockeying in and out of driveways into, you know, non-White Oak style traffic.
Yeah, and that's, that's where this issue about the standard applying is that, what we're basically saying is that you can, you can still do a two-car garage, but you have to set it back 15 feet from the front facade. If you have a flat lot and you are generally 50 feet or wider in width, you should be able to push that garage back. There should not be a reason why that can't be achieved. If there is, there is the potential that you have enough slope on your lot that makes that difficult, but not enough slope that you actually would be in the hillside overlay, which would allow you to put it all the way at the front. And we haven't found those parcels yet. So, but, so what, so that, and what we're recognizing is that right now, you, you have to put the garage, the, the existing standards actually are requiring the garage to be at or near the front facade. And 65% of that can actually be, so the only provision that actually allows you to push the garage all the way to the front, five feet from the front property line, is actually in the hillside overlay.
I see. So if it's a busy street or one with no parking, your option there would be two-car parking, but towards the rear of the lot. That's, that's the intent?
Yeah. If you want to do one-car garage, you can do that at the front setback. If you want to have a two-car garage, you can still do it. You just have to push it back.
Got it. And then just, if someone could enlighten me, so I understand the, the 19% slope, how does that apply to a lot that's flat for a while and then drops off? Because you do see a lot of that in town, and, and it's the drop-off in the back is troublesome as far as moving that garage.
So in the hillside overlay district, there, there's two different scenarios that would trigger or that would determine whether the property is subject to the hillside overlay. And that is the percent slope from street to setback, right? So we have a setback of 15 feet. So when you measure the cross-slope within that area, if that's 19...
Just 15 feet measured in.
It's called slope to setback gradient.
Okay.
And if that area is 19% or more, you're in the hillside. If it's flat and then the land kind of slopes up or slopes down, and where you put the footprint of the house, if that footprint where you're placing it has a slope of 19% or greater, you're in the hillside. So it's one or the other that can trigger whether or not you're in the hillside overlay. So it's getting into the site and then the footprint on the land itself.
I see. But that would be as proposed? Meaning like, what if the existing house is not on a slope, but the proposed expansion takes it into the slope? Does that then qualify for hillside overlay?
If I understand you correctly, it's the existing natural grade. So whatever the grade is currently, it's not from finished grade, because then you could just flatten it out and say, I'm not subject to hillside overlay.
Got it. Not changing the grade, but expanding the house to the rear. I'm familiar with lots that are, the current house is built on a flat, but then it drops off precipitously after that. So the question is, under this standard, there's an encouragement to push the garage out into where that drop-off happens, but I don't think those homes would be in the hilltop overlay, unless you qualify for hilltop overlay based on your plan, which pushes into that area. Does that make sense?
I'm certain, I'll have to look at the code, but I'm pretty certain it's for whatever portion of development triggers that hillside overlay. So there could be areas where an existing house may be flat and other areas, you know, that are, that, where the footprint would be on a land form that has 19% or more. I'll have to double-check the code, but I'm pretty certain that's how it would work.
Meaning if the proposed extension qualifies for hillside overlay, the whole thing would be reviewed under hillside overlay? Okay, got it.
Maybe just to, one additional question in, in that vein. So driving Britton and Crestview a bit, there's many houses that have got two-car garages at the front. And I know that the signs at the top of the street say grade eight and nine percent. So I guess, if they didn't exist today, would they be allowed to put the two-car garage flush with the front of the house as they are today?
If, if they are in the hillside overlay, and I, I can't answer that specifically for those parcels, it's likely that the slope on the parcels is a great deal more than the actual street. If they are in the hillside overlay, they would be allowed to put the garages at the front. If they are not at the hillside overlay and one of those houses wanted to be rebuilt and more than 50% of the walls were actually changed, they would have to bring that garage into conformance.
That's a pretty big area. I'm sure you guys have that memorized, what, what residential area that is. It's just going up Britton from, from Laurel all the way up to Crestview. I mean, not that, yeah, it starts like from Alameda to the top of Britton and Crestview. I mean, you guys know off the top of your head, can we look at the thing to find out whether that is hillside overlay? That's a lot of houses. And then the ones that going directly north from, from Britton all the way up to, to Club. I mean, there's a big, huge incline there, and I forget how much the grade is. But those houses, the, most of these houses are what we're trying to get away from. And my, and when I think what he was asking, and I'm just reiterating, is that if, if we were to redo those houses under the new standard form, would, would they still be able to do the two-car garage at front, or would they have to conform to the standards that are being put here? So the, so in order to know that, we need to know whether the ones that are existing are on the hillside overlay or not. So can we look at the map and find out while, while we're talking and stuff? And let me have that answer.
And for clarification, there is not any button or color coding that we currently have on our zoning map that is going to tell you which site is subject to the hillside overlay. That's determined when a project is submitted. So we require the applicant to provide the data to demonstrate what these, the percent slope is of the lot, so then we can determine, do these additional standards apply? But this is typically done on a case-by-case basis. So I, this would be new information or a new layer that we would have to create and, you know, bring back. But that's how it works today.
Yeah, I can see that, I can, I, just that area from the Alameda up to Crestview and then from, then up, and then Crestview up to the top of the peak there. I mean, those are all big houses on small lots. And if they, and if they would, if the, if change would then not allow them to have two-car garage, I think that's something, I don't think that's a good thing, I guess, is what I'm saying. I really want to find out, because that impacts a lot. So from Alameda on Britton up to Crestview, those houses, and then from Britton and Crestview up to the peak where the water towers are.
Yeah, so we've, we've provided a sort of a map relief diagram here. Kind of shows the, where the hills are in San Carlos. And what we're going to see if we can do is get our geographic information system experts to... to see if there's a possibility of mapping the, the lots that are greater than 19%.
That'd be very helpful.
We're going to work on that and see if we can bring you a map with the parcels at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Yeah, that'd be very helpful. Thanks.
Stefan, it seems to me there's another architectural alternative solution. And that, I'd like, but I, I know you've considered it, but I don't see it in the section drawings or the models. And that's what I'll call a story and a half, where the roof starts at the plate at the top of the first floor. And it would, I think it would have some benefits on light and privacy. Did you look at those?
Yeah, and that's a very good point. And the way that a second floor is measured today is that if you put the second floor mostly or entirely under the roof form, you know, we might think about that as like an attic story, it is considered by staff in, in the application as the second floor. And so that is definitely a strategy that houses have used to reduce the massing. They will drop the eve line even below the 25 feet that we're proposing and have the second story be under a roof. And that would continue to be possible. But in what we are proposing, there is, there is no zoning standard that would require that.
Stefan, up in the hills, we also do have a lot of oddly shaped lots. And I see based on the architectural, you know, the architect comments that we received, I'm seeing flexibility for oddly shaped lots through waiver. Like, what would that mean? Like, what kind of discretion is involved in this waiver? And what, what do we foresee as that process?
So typically, what that would mean is that a dimensional standard could be considered for a percent variation. So, for example, if there is a standard that said that wings needed to be 18 feet apart from each other, that there could be a provision that said, well, in certain cases, we actually could allow them to be closer. And that sort of modulation or waiver could be reviewable by staff and actually approved by staff. If it came up to the RDRC for further discussion, it would be noted as something that the staff has considered and that they are making a recommendation to RDRC, that that waiver should be granted. But we typically see those situations where some relief might be warranted, but it is not so impactful as asking for a variance. So often what that means is that the existing zoning code actually has some provisions for waivers. And we are considering that that actually would be important to carry through in how many of these standards are imposed.
Got it. So the idea is it's, it's sort of one-off and flexible and a discussion with staff. One that, you know, these standards, I think, put a lot of importance on is how we calculate the width of the lot, right? Because the width determines the, the actual allowable width of the main body. So in the case of lots, you know, I think often we still see, you know, instead of a rectangle, it's a trapezoid, right? And so we sort of are, maybe we're only 45 feet on the front, but 60 feet wide in the back. I think, you know, I would suggest, and was it considered, that we did just, instead of leaving that as kind of a to-be-determined waiver, I mean, I, I think if we're looking at straight lines, we ought to just decide how we're going to handle that, right? Like, is it the average of 40 and 60, so it's a 50? Or, you know, how do we actually want to handle that?
That's a great question. So the existing zoning ordinance does provide direction on how lots, lot width is measured. And it's actually measured at the midpoint, correct? So if I take a line from the center of the lot and cross it into the middle of the parcel, at the actual midpoint is where I would measure the lot width. So something that's 50 at the front and 70 at the back, maybe it's somewhere around 60, and I would use that to set my main body width.
Got it. So basically, each side, you find the midpoint and where those connect, that, that's your width?
Yeah.
That's okay. And then it's obvious that that, that standard carries over into this determination? Okay.
So I'm, under the projected changes, it's, it basically has three areas that would be considered for waivers. One would be wanting to preserve a protected tree, right? Then, then it says lot shape and easement. So like you were saying, like, if we had a trapezoid lot, and then also easement. So those are those right now, what the staff is considering? The areas that we can, that we can, that you can consider waivers? Or are there any other types of waivers that this falls into?
Yeah, those are the three that were suggested by the local architects. But we're looking at others as well, and we're looking to some other communities to see what they're doing. So we'll bring back a menu of, of things for you.
I have another question, which is that ultimately, we need to, as our commission, we have to weigh the owner's right to build on their house versus the greater good of the community and achieve the right balance there. And you arrived at a set of rules that have a, a ratio of around 0.7 to 0.75. How did you turn the volume to that spot? And is it possible, if, and we decided as a commission that we want the volume to be a little lower or higher, is this model of movable wings and main body amenable to, to a different floor area ratio?
Excellent question. The, the way that we sort of backed into this, so we sort of looked at what were reasonable dimensions that we are seeing in San Carlos neighborhoods, but also in other neighborhoods that have similar lot sizes and have, are built out. And we then calculated the resultant FAR and lot coverage for those conditions, which is sort of how we arrived at where we were. Generally, the lot coverage number is, on average, similar with many of your peers. It's a little bit even on the higher side. Generally, the FAR number is more liberal than what many of your peers impose. So we sort of are interpreting this as a reduction in the allowable zoning envelope, but still allowing or allowing houses a greater size than, than many other communities actually might, might allow. It is reasonable to consider turning the dial on any of those standards to seek greater restrictions. And there is sort of a discussion, I think, that the Shack and staff and many have had about finding that balance, which needs to be, I, in my opinion, does need to align with the values of the community. And communities are different. They sort of approach this with a lot of differences. As Al mentioned, there are some communities who have been very restrictive in, in what can be allowed. And San Carlos has traditionally been a less restrictive community in terms of allowing houses of a greater size than many of its peers. And that is definitely something I think that can be considered.
So maybe just to put a fine point on, a great point. Has there been any discussion or a proposal to have this be an "and" and have a maximum FAR in addition to what's proposed? And then, in your opinion, are they incompatible or compatible?
Yes, there has been some discussion about providing a maximum FAR as part of this strategy. I think it's totally reasonable. And in fact, the architects brought up the fact that the FAR is a really great shorthand to very quickly communicate to your client how much house you can build, which is a prime concern of a lot of people who are investing a lot of money in a new house or renovation. So I, I do believe that sort of that is, that might be sort of beneficial. I would say that, I would continue to agree that in and of itself, it will likely not solve the issues of house size that the community seems to be experiencing.
Yeah, I would like to comment on that, just to point out, you know, this strikes me as a big investment we're making as a community into a new layer of complexity, right? To solve a problem, an identified problem of, we don't like the size and the mass of the houses, and we want to be sophisticated in how we solve it. And if we, my perspective would be, if we really do, you know, embrace this level of complexity and we feel like it can solve the problem, then just adding kind of the old-fashioned restriction in addition to that doesn't strike me as, you know, I would question why we invested in this level of sophistication and complexity to then also just say, nope, we cap it here too. So that would be just my commentary on that. I, I would be resistant, you know. If, if we feel like this complexity gets us there, then we've made a big investment to do that and to then also just cap it. I would have a lot of questions around it.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just add some color to the discussions that the Shack had during this. And they, they discussed FAR several times over the time that they met. And they were represented by a broad range of people in our community. And some of the things that they talked about were that, that generally there's more small lots in San Carlos than some of the other communities that apply in FAR. And then also about who, who the people are that are building additions and the, the new homes and the need for more space for growing families and also multi-generational families. A lot of times, the parents will now sometimes live with the family, and there's a need for that. And they felt that it was more arbitrary in terms of, like what Stefan said, in terms of just applying a number to something that may not reduce the actual scale or the appearance of the building. It's more of just arbitrarily saying, okay, there's a, a certain amount of square feet everybody can have, and, and there's your amount. And then they did talk about the cost of property in San Carlos and, you know, getting a return on your investment and that kind of thing. So those are some of the things that they discussed in addition to the, the technical standards.
Okay, thank you all. People in the audience, thank you for your patience. It's time that you get to speak now. We also want to look at the models, but I think since you've been waiting so patiently, we can defer that until everybody gets a chance to speak. If you haven't turned in one of these slips, in order to speak, please take one at the table in the back and bring it up to me or one of the staff, and we'll get started. We're going, thank you. It'll be in the order that they were submitted. And since it's, we've been here over two hours already, and thank you for, for that. I'd like to limit your, your talk to two minutes or slightly over, and we'll remind you. So it's, it's not a time for you to ask questions yet, but make your points, and you should be able to do it in that time.
Chairman, I would just like to say that unfortunately, I do have a hard stop this evening, so I will have to depart at about 9:30 tonight.
You can look at the models before you go.
I will do that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
First is a group of two representing Good Growth of San Carlos, Christian Veshia and then Brent Cohen. Christian's first.
Okay, we had sent in advance a few slides to help provide some visual support to the presentation. First of all, thank you for the opportunity to step up and make comments. My name is Christian Veshia. This is Brent Cohen. We've been with, in, basically leading a community-based organization of residents that have concerns about current standards, has been involved with this for quite a while. Try and keep this as brief as possible. We are two people, so in the past, we've been given a little more leeway than single, single comments. I guess I'd like to begin by saying that we think there are many good ideas presented in the forms-based approach and are also very happy to see some of the process-related changes because over time, we've come to the very firm view that good outcomes and a reasonable balance of rights between residents, whether they're new or have been in the house next door for 15 years, it requires both good standards that are clear and objective and good process. So that, we're happy to see. At the same time, I say, we're pretty disappointed that we don't feel like the city has made any substantive changes since the last meeting or since these recommendations were proposed specifically to address some of the concerns raised by residents. I've seen some potential accommodations to comments made from architects, but not directly from residents. So can we have the next slide, please? Oh, I've got the clicker. So really, to refocus, you know, how this all began and what we're here to solve, it really is the impact of oversized homes on two things. Neighbors who are next door in, in homes on their privacy, light and air, the general quality of life in a home that they've been in for a long time, as well as what's the experience as you walk down the street? And I would characterize the first as being the neighbor experience and the other as being the street experience. I think both are important. I think we've gotten a solution to maybe half of the issue here, which is the street experience. Because I think that's first and foremost what forms-based design focuses on. I also want to go back to the fact that the beginning of this process, the city's own survey, asking the question, how should San Carlos zoning standards compare to other cities on the peninsula? More than three-quarters said, we'd like to see standards for house size in San Carlos that are equivalent to, or, what was it? 37% said actually more restrictive than standards in neighboring cities. And if you look at what has been proposed, we're getting exactly the opposite of that. It's standards that are 35 to 45% bigger than the median of zoning, of far limits and, and house size limits in neighboring communities. So I have a few things to say about Shack. I was on Shack. I'm one of the members. Let's start with, you know, the fact that there were concerned, committed residents involved. We began by identifying what we thought the issues were. I think our group provided valuable feedbacks and ideas. But I will tell you that the, the focus and the ideas that we addressed were basically form-based recommendations from the start. And as a group, we were asked to provide feedback on form-based recommendations, not to consider a waterfront of potential solutions, but say, do you like moving the garage? Do you like, you know, the idea of wings? And you could go through each of those things and like them. The other thing I want to say is I think that it's, it's an advisory body. We didn't write the recommendations. We didn't make the recommendations. And the support for ultimately them, it was, nor was it a unanimous. So I, I take a little concern at the notion that, you know, the Shack recommended this and Shack did that. These are the city's recommendations with input from Shack. And I would also say that it was supposed to be three people on the committee who had some connection with building, architecture, or real estate. In the end, we had five. So I don't think Shack represents broad-based community values. It was useful input, but it's not. So these are the number of meetings that have been held on this issue. Good Growth has attended pretty much all of these. And as an individual, since I was on Shack, I've attended every single one. I have heard in excess of 100 residents stand up and make comments about their views and their, what they hope this would do for the city. And I would say 95% of those have been in favor of reasonable standards in line with other communities on the peninsula. I have heard almost no one stand up and say, oh, you know what? We need to preserve the right to have very large homes or oversized homes in San Carlos. That's important to me. You know, I think the focus on size, scale, and mass... You know, I think the focus on size, scale, and mass omits the question of why do we care about those things? They're not, those are abstract principles. We care about them because of the impact they have on us next door, because of the way they change the look and the feel of our city as a whole. So let's, you know, what we're trying to solve for is residents' experience and the street experience, and I don't think we should be satisfied until we've done both.
Yeah, so, you know, to sum this up, and to keep this brief, right? We mentioned this the last meeting, I think we've mentioned this pretty consistently, as well as many other residents. We believe that there's been a lot of good work done, in terms of form-based approach. But at the same point in time, you know, I think we would take exception with not having some type of maxed far out there. All of the other mid-peninsula cities do. It appears the form-based approach still has much larger homes than our peer cities, when we look at it. It doesn't appear that that's what the residents want, when you look at the one survey that was done, with the 78%, who want at least as restrictive, if not more restrictive, development standards. So we believe that a FAR needs to be complementary here, and inserted as part of this. You know, in general, the comments tend to reside along the lines of the streetscape view, as opposed to the side-by-side resident view. And so, you know, analogy I heard somebody use a while back, was like, you know, putting pinstripes on an elephant, you know, on the front, that might help, on the side, the side profile might still not help so much. So we believe that's important. We also believe having some sort of protection, as it relates to light, is important as well. So therefore, you know, a daylight plain standard seems to be acceptable in many other mid-peninsula cities, it seems to work for them, based on what Stefan said. You know, exemptions can be granted in certain cases, with one of those standards in place. So we believe that's important as well. And then finally, we are encouraged, I would say, Christian, I think you'd agree, that we have seen a lot of thought being given to the overall residential design review process, and making some changes there, and we applaud those efforts, in terms of broader notifications, as well as having architects in on the RDRC, and the idea of having waivers and some relief potentially, so the RDRC actually has more power within their authority, as opposed to, you know, I think the general perception is, they've been just rubber stamping everything that's come through, because they've had no choice over the last several years. So closing, you know, we would just point out once again, that the overall FAR that we see, in terms of looking at the mid-peninsula cities, in terms of the ones we looked at, the median ranges between 51% to 54%, and it actually gets smaller, as you go towards larger lot size. So the idea that we have these resulting FARs of in the 70s, you know, down from the 90s, while that's better, we just simply don't believe it's good enough. Thank you.
Yeah, I would just like to make two closing points. One is that, to reiterate, or to say what Brent said, I mean, we had literally standards that allowed houses twice as large as just any other city. So the fact that we have reduced from something that was just, you know, so out of line, the fact that it's a reduction doesn't mean it solves the problem. And the challenge I would put to the planning commission and at San Carlos, to say, how do we know that these recommendations solve the problem? I don't think they've been pressure-tested. You're asking us to do a uncontrolled trial on the entire city for standards, and just say, well, because size and mass, form-based should make a difference, that they solve the problem. And I haven't yet to see anything, any data, or pressure-testing from the city, that would indicate this actually does address the issue. So thank you for your time, and we'll let the other residents have a moment.
Thank you both for your comments.
One real quick thing, when you're talking about on your proposed max size, proposed max house size graph, when you're taking the average and the median numbers, is that including the current San Carlos standard, or just the other city's standard?
There's two for, if you want to back.
Yeah, if you go back to that graph. So the graph, the average and the median are for the six other cities on the peninsula.
Okay, so it doesn't include San Carlos at all?
No.
It does, as, at the 91?
The calculations do not, and average and median, they do not include San Carlos.
All right, so the average, these two numbers, the average and the median, are just the green bars?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
And can you also say, is the San Carlos column proposed, not current, right?
The deep red is the current, and so, you know, allows on a 5,000 square foot lot, a 4,500 square foot house versus the median of 2,600. And the pink bar is the reduction. So that's where, just because something has become smaller, doesn't mean it solves the issue. Oh, sorry, we're looking at...
Yeah, on this particular...
On that one?
Chart, is the San Carlos proposed or existing?
That is proposed.
Thank you.
Next is Linda Ferrera.
I've lived in San Carlos, in my current house, for 20 years. And I've made this speech probably before, but for those of you that are new, for the last five years, I've lived in absolute fear, because the house next door to me was inhabited by a very old lady who finally passed away, and the house sat empty for all those years, while she lived at San Carlos Elms. And once, when she passed away, of course, the house went up for sale. And it was a nice little one-story house, and I lived in absolute fear that whoever bought it was going to build one of the McMansions, and it was going to interfere with my privacy, light, and air, as everyone who was at the previous meetings complained about, on and on, and that my privacy in my backyard was going to be destroyed. And I just envisioned, you know, an entire family peering out of their windows into my backyard. And not that I have anything to hide, but you can all just imagine the same thing happening to you, and you wouldn't like it either. So fortunately, the young couple, very young couple, that bought the house couldn't afford to do that, and kept the exact footprint, and didn't go up. And so I dodged a bullet, and I'm very, very happy about that. So I get to keep my backyard and my privacy, even though all the houses around me are very, you know, we have shallow backyards, and we can hear each other, and we can hear the neighbors fighting, and all the other stuff, even though I have probably 15, 20 feet between each of the four or five houses that are very close to me. I live on Charlton, which is in between Beverly and Devonshire, and it's a wonderful neighborhood. However, the thing that bothers me the most about, other than everything that was just mentioned by our leader over here on Good Growth San Carlos, but the thing that, one of the things that bothers me the most, that hasn't really been talked about too much, is the setbacks. And to me, the five-foot setback on the sides of the houses is, I know it's the current standard, and I just think that that is just not sufficient. Because, especially with this sliding around of the house thing, that we're supposed to be negotiating with our neighbors, I mean, get a grip. I mean, what, who's going to do that? And first of all, you push the house five feet over on one, what, so you have two feet? How are you going to paint the side of your house? One foot, no feet? I mean, what's going to happen? You see, you've got this other house, that's like, it's right on their property line? Those people aren't going to go for that. Even, so then you've got, what, 10 feet on the other side? Great, I want to be on that side. But still, that's like, 10 feet. What, you plant a couple bushes, now you've got five feet? And so, it's, I mean, that's just not going to work. I have 20 feet, and you can still hear the people out there talking with their coffee in the morning, while you're out there talking with their coffee in the morning. I mean, you could throw, you could throw the dog ball and hit them. I mean, five feet, come on, guys, that's not, that's not enough. Maybe you guys that live up on Crestview, where you never go outside, because your lots are on a hill, but we're, when we're down in the flats, we go outside all the time. We're sitting out there, the kids are playing, you know, that people be next door, their kids are playing, their dogs are barking. You've got to have more than five feet. And as far as the house sliding around, and you're going to negotiate with your neighbors, that's not going to happen. You're going to hate each other before they even move in. You wouldn't move your house over, you slide it over on the other side? Come on. And who's going to arbitrate where the windows are going to go? I mean, you're going to do that?
Well, the RDRC does that. I mean, that's what the RDRC, a lot of what the RDRC does, is negotiate those windows.
Yeah, I can see that now. So then my new neighbors come, and they want to put their window right where my bedroom window is, on the upstairs, and so you guys are going to say, no, you've got to move it over, and they're going to go, okay, like you said, you're going to pay another, what, $20,000 to have your architect, you know, redesign the plans, and then get in line down at the planning office, and wait another three months for them to approve the, I don't know how long it takes, or two months, or whatever, to approve, re-approve the change designs? I mean, it seems to me that this stuff needs to be like, laid out, you know, there's got to be a better way to do it. And I agree with what was said about, you know, this was the only plan that was put forward, and every time we've tried to come up with, no, the public, I mean, what that other meeting you had in the other room, it was overflow crowd, with what, 150 people or whatever, everybody said the same thing. Unfortunately, those people only wanted to go to one meeting, so they just showed up to that one meeting. Me, I never wanted to go to this many meetings, what, I've been to like, four of these meetings? I never wanted to be this involved in politics. I don't like coming here. I mean, you guys are all really nice people, but I don't want us to spend my evenings here. I've got other things to do. I don't even have a house being built, or anybody buy me. I'm doing this because I am dedicated to follow this through, to try to save somebody else from having to worry for five years about what's getting built next to them. Because I started it, and I want to finish it. And I just don't think we're going anywhere with this stuff. I mean, we, you are going to have a commit, a group of people, of citizens, and one architect, and one real estate person, and the next thing we know, it's turned over to, no offense, a consultant. Well, I used to be in purchasing, I know what happens, you hire a consultant, and they give you what you ask for. So whoever gave the scope of work to the consultant, is what the consultant does. And when we asked Al, like, one time before, and Al goes, well, you know, that's what the, that's what the city council asked us to do, and it was very specific about what you were asked to do. It didn't include a bigger scope, so other things weren't thought of, to be asked for. Well, it's time to ask for more, we should have made a bigger scope in the beginning, to talk about, how do we make this more equitable to what all the other cities were? Instead of being, now we're still like, having the biggest house sizes of all the cities on the peninsula. We don't want that. We, that's us, we people of San Carlos, we don't want that. I mean, the only people that want that are the people that want the big McMansions. The people that live here don't want that. So if they want the big McMansion, buy a bigger lot, and stick a big house on it. Don't squeeze it up to five feet on either side, and all the way back, even including a garage right up to the back property line, that you guys said last time, people could put an in-law unit on, and that wouldn't even count as in the square feet. No, that's not right. That is not right. That's all I have to say. I think work, the work is, that's not all I have to say. The work is not done. This is not ready to go to the city council. More things need to be looked at. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Margaret Warren.
I'm Margaret Warren, and I live up on Hewitt Drive, and I live on a lot that is very steep. My initial reason for coming tonight was to catch up on this, because I had not been aware of the group, and I'm sorry I wasn't aware a little sooner. But specifically, I had a couple of major concerns. One of them is, in a recent design review decision, where a plan was approved for a neighbor of mine to build a, hmm, close to a McMansion, not quite. The lot size was talked about a lot, and the lot size, about 11,000 square feet. What was not taken into consideration was the true topography of that lot. So what is an 11,000 square foot lot, really is not the same when you lay it out flat in the White Oaks area, as it is when it is 6,000 square feet, and then down, so that you are now in line of sight, very close to the neighbor below you. And that's what they did, they built this big thing, and now they're imposing on the privacy of the people who are on, is it Sunset? No, Heather Court, and also on Nanette. So the point is, the topography needs to be part of the equation. I'm not sure how one does it, but it has to be, because the mere lot size is not relevant when, for example, I cannot build on the 30 feet behind me, that's rock, that's heading up towards Heather. It's my property, but I can't build on it. That's technically part of my lot size, but to use that as part of an equation would be absurd. As I listened this evening, several things struck me. Parking. To suggest, in this day and age, that a one-car garage is appropriate for any house that's being built, is an absurdity to me. In the first place, we have, whatever the current generation is called, coming home with their cars. And don't tell me we're transit-oriented. I don't care how much transit you put, and I don't care how good, even if high-speed rail goes through, the reality is that the peninsula is dedicated to its cars. And we don't even let our children walk to school. God forbid they should walk a block. No, they get driven. So cars are not going away, not in the near future, so to suggest that a one-car garage is adequate under any circumstances, is craziness. I, it's just, it's bad planning. Now, when it comes to planning, I speak with a little bit of experience in this. I spent 10 years as a planning commissioner in South San Francisco. Now, granted, it was a few years ago, it was from 87 to 97, but it was a long time, and I went through a whole lot of stuff relative to Mount San Bruno, et cetera, so I'm not inexperienced in this area. Again, one-car garage is not adequate. Compatibility with the neighborhood. One of the things that is not addressed, that I saw, was actually looking at, whatever is proposed, is it compatible with the neighborhood? And as you saw, the big, tall, two-story house with the little one-story houses that don't have a basement, next to it on either side, you know, that's not, that's not really The boxiness, I don't know if this was just because it was being done, because of the drawings, it was just easier, but to suggest that the boxes that they, that were shown as potential homes, looked better than that, that craftsman-style, redone, rather large home, that these boxes look better than the craftsmen? Uh-uh. They don't look better. They look like boxes, like boxes stuck on top of boxes. We have homeless communities that use cardboard boxes. Do we want to make our city look like it's boxes on top of boxes? That doesn't make a whole lot of sense. This is supposed to be the city of good living. Let's bring it back there. My involvement with the city goes back to the 70s, and my involvement goes back with people I know who were president of the Chamber of Commerce, et cetera. I moved to this city in 2005, because I wanted to be in the city of good living. I am now seriously looking, that maybe I have made a mistake, and maybe I should be looking elsewhere. There were a number of other things, but since I am limited, I will let that go. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Bill Harkola.
I live over by the Burton Park area, and did a remodel of my house to capture solar gain, and now I have a large house right next to me, that's shadowing me completely for the whole winter. And I'm, I'm a proponent of daylight plain, and I think that if that was used as a tool, in addition to the other aspects that were talked about tonight, would, in my case, had it been similar to Palo Alto, which is fairly restrictive, it being 10 feet with a 45-degree angle, I would have two more months of light, instead of none. two more months of light instead of none in the whole winter. And, you know, that's pretty substantial when it's considered that I really enjoyed some wonderful solar gain in the winter, and, and now it's gone. And I did go through the RDRC process, and, you know, I was shown empathy, but they had no tools, nothing to do that could help me under those, under this circumstance, because they were, the neighbor was completely in the right. And planning approved the project, and they talked about, you know, well, we could plant another tree, you know, but it didn't address me losing all my light in the wintertime. And it, it's a real shame. So I think there needs to be consideration for light and privacy and the right to that. And that's really important. And when you look at this model here, and you really get down to the scale, these houses are two stories, just packed next to each other, is that really what San Carlos is going to look like? You know, I think it gets down to, the RDRC can be extremely effective if they have the right tools. I think that the standard should be more restrictive, and then give consideration, and with thoughtful consideration by having architects on, which is great to hear that actually that, that's going to happen. I'm, I'm also a proponent of having a smaller, a lower floor area ratio. And I also didn't hear anything about corner lots. And that's predominantly my problem. I'm on a corner lot. So the side yard setback of this two-story house is facing my rear yard, so something else to consider. So to summarize, I think RDRC is extremely important, and I think that we should have a little bit more restrictive standards than what I've heard today. And I think they've gone, it, the changes are great. I like the direction it's going in. But we really have to consider reducing the massing incentive on the second story and that effect on neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Next is Mr. Kevin Frederick. Kevin, speak to me. Okay. Put him at the bottom of the stack. Next is Michael James.
Hello. So I'm, I, in the hillside area on Beverly, and I have a, a comment and a question for the, the council, if, if that's okay. I, I'm in a relatively small structure, about 1,900 square feet, and it, it is very slopy. The, the terrain is way more restrictive than, than the building codes could possibly be. But one, one concern I have is that with the, the proposed new standards, plus the terrain, it basically makes it impossible to meet every, every aspect of what's going on. And so the existing structure, even though it's not one of these, these large properties, would definitely be out of spec of, of everything discussed. And I believe that's true even with some of the, the contingencies that were made for the hillside area. And so my, my question for the, the council is, if, if considering renovations for this property, to, to what extent are, are changes or improvements possible, given that it's slightly out of, out of spec?
Well, I'll, I'll try that through the chair. You would have to really sit down with a city planner at the, at the zone encounter to start, or an architect or designer to kind of see what's there and, and how the standards would affect your development. Kind of asking the question without kind of seeing your lot and the slope and how your existing house sits on is very difficult to provide a, an answer. Lisa, did you have anything to add to that?
And the only other thing that I would add to that is that we have received, I think your question may be more of what Al just answered, but in my mind, I was thinking about it differently, so maybe I'll just provide additional information. But one of the questions that we've received from the community and the planning commission is how does this apply to existing homes, when they want to do an addition, or expand off the rear, or however they may choose to expand? And the approach would be no different than what we have today. So today, even under today's standards, when an applicant wants to come in and do an addition, if they have an existing home that may be not compliant with our current standards, they can do an addition, provided that the new construction is, is done in a way that meets the current standards. So we wouldn't make anyone take off, or reduce, or, or excuse me, increase a non-conforming side yard setback. The same would be the case for any new standard that would come out of this process. So you would still be allowed to expand, but the expansion would need to be done in a way that complies to the current regulations. And in these particular, particular cases, like Al said, we really encourage you to come check in with us early on, and we can go over how the potential rules would affect your house.
Okay, I'll, I'll do that and check in, but one comment, is this not entirely clear-cut, whether just the additions are compliant, given all of the, the form-based rules? So if you were to extend and the existing main body is out of spec, does your extension count as a wing or a main body, et cetera? I can imagine that becoming a sticky process.
Well, like we said, we would, we would work with you on that, to determine what the, how the form of the existing house would fit in with the current standings, standards, and then where you would be able to expand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I'm a eight-year San Carlos resident and a 30-year Bay Area resident, also a very experienced real estate developer and contractor. That being said, I am in support of more responsible development here. I think our rules are a little bit too generous. And I have developed in eight different states and many communities within the Bay Area. However, I want to strongly encourage the planning commission to move away from a forms-based restriction. I've had a lot of experience, as I think the architects in the room do too, of trying to create usable space. And when you create narrow rectangles, especially the wings off them, what you end up creating are a lot of hallways and staircases and very inefficient space. And I think it's unfairly restrictive to the owner of the property. For example, I live on Elm, near Britton. I have a 120-foot-tall redwood tree in the back of my house. It's a beautiful tree that we've taken good care of, and I'd like to stay a reasonable distance away from it. My little 900-square-foot house is not really adequate for my family, and at some point, we plan to expand that. I don't want to encroach on the tree. But a forms-based structure would create so much restriction on the ground floor and on the second floor, that I'd be forced to encroach more on that tree. And part of the goal that was set upfront was to avoid encroachment to the rear yard or use of the rear yard. I've got neighbors on either side that are three feet away from the property line and use about 80% of the, of the lot. So I support an FAR restriction. I listened to the comments tonight. I disagree. I think the neighboring communities are able to create some restriction to the size of homes by using FAR as a guideline. And it would allow us to have flexibility within design and modest or more reasonable-sized homes on our lots. I'm not in favor of McMansions and over, overdeveloping the space, but I, I am in favor of some flexibility. I want to support that other comment about the two-car garage as well. The forms-based discussion is really sort of judgment-based about, about what people like. I, I agree with the comment about the, the boxiness of, of structures. I have got no problem with the sort of wedding cake design. It is driven in part by the side setbacks and the way we have to stack homes. So when you look at the size of lots that many of us have, my lot is 6,000 square feet, it's 50 feet wide and 120 feet deep. I'm going to lose the last probably 50 feet of the lot and the first 15 feet of the lot. If I'm forced to take my garage and then shove it back another 15 feet, I have an almost unusable ground floor. So this main body structure, or a forms-based structure, is just simply too restrictive. I think that we should be allowed to put a two-car garage in, if that's what we want to do. I think there's other ways to aesthetically set back or move that garage and make it less prominent in front of the house, if that's an issue. But, you know, we, we have to reach the reality that, as times change and families are looking for more of a family-sized home, we can thoughtfully restrict them out that they build, but still give them the flexibility to have the house that they want. When I look at the proposed main body structure on a second story with the side setbacks that I would have, and I add to it hallways and circulation for stairs, both upstairs and downstairs, what's left are tiny little bedrooms and very little storage. It just becomes a, an unusable space. And that wouldn't be the case if we used FAR. I want to remind the, the, the planning commission too, that we got to this place of oversized homes by a broad sweeping decision that was made years ago. I don't want to see us replicate that same process by swinging the pendulum in the other direction. So I'd much prefer to see us either test some of the solutions, or, and/or take it in a stepwise fashion. Start with something like FAR. My last comment, I've developed a lot in San Francisco, residential homes in San Francisco. San Francisco abuses, absolutely abuses their, their discretionary review process. There's got to be a better way to do this. There are people that make a living in San Francisco, larger, larger community, larger environment, different economy, but there are people that make a living by disrupting homeowners from building the home that they want, even if it falls within planning code. There are people from different areas that'll come in and disrupt that process without any accountability, and delay that process until the Board of Permit Appeals can reverse that decision. I don't want to see us get to that. I'd like to see the RDRC have input and work with neighbors and, and petitioners, but not in a way that violates state code. Thanks very much.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
You mentioned FAR, used, or is your best case, or what you're proposing, using FAR only, or FAR in conjunction with percent lot coverage? Are you, or one or both?
I would use both lot coverage and FAR.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next is David Crabbe.
And I apologize, I'll have to depart at this time. Chairman Bergman and members of the, of the commission. I'm Dave Crabbe. I'm an architect, live in San, in San Carlos. And I, I came here pretty much thinking that this whole process is extremely complicated, probably more complicated than it should be. And I decided, jumping back at the FAR as an approach, and I think the FAR does make a certain amount of approach, plus land coverage, those two together can help reduce massing of buildings considerably. But assuming that this goes ahead, and it has some definitely interesting concept to it, to it. I also don't mind the wedding cake houses, although I don't like to see every one of them. I've designed one that was in San Carlos, that met the original code with the wedding cake look, and it came out quite nice. Anyway, my main concern about this is, this seems to be looking, heading us toward, this forms-based code seems to be heading us toward roof lines that are extremely complicated, with lots of intersections and what have, have you. And I've said this at the last meeting in May, in 2020, the state of California is going to require zero-based, or zero emission houses. That means solar panels on the roof. And we're designing houses that we can't put solar panels on the roof because they're too complicated. So I think that needs to certainly be taken into consideration. Along with that, I think the daylight plane makes a lot of sense, especially again, in relationship to the solar requirement. It, and it's not that, that far off, from the diagrams that he, that the consultant showed, it's not that far off to do a incline plane, like it come up maybe 12 feet or 16 feet in a 45-degree angle. It looks like it met most of the design that he already had in his plan, and so I don't see a big, a big issue with that. So that's a concern there. The one-car garage versus two-car, I don't like cars very well, although I drive one, I have to. I think that tandem parking makes some sense in terms of reducing the number of, the size of the garage. I don't like the idea of one car in a garage and one car in the driveway, because I don't like to look at cars. So, but a tandem garage would be fine, that would work. And then it comes along with the, if we use this wing scheme, I think the architects had commented earlier in some of their correspondence, were concerned about the width of the, the wing. If we're going to do the, a house, and then you put a car, a one-car garage off to the side, the logical place to put that would be under one of those wings that come off the side. That means the wing should be 12 feet wide and at least 21 feet deep, and the code, or the proposal is 18 feet maximum for those wings. So that doesn't make any sense, where we're going to put those garages. And so that, that's an issue I have for me. Another issue, they were distinguishing between one-story and two-story houses. If the, basically, in the majority of the city, or the, people can build two-story houses, why do we distinguish between requirements for one-story houses and two-story houses? Why aren't they the same? Some of the people that complain because a two-story house comes up next to their one-story house, may find themselves in the, in the future needing to expand their house and wanting to go up a second story. And if they, they're in suddenly requirements that say just one-story houses in the entire neighborhood. Now, in certain cases, like Iclors, yes, that makes a lot of sense, they're very unique architectural things, but in other areas, not necessarily. So I'm a little concerned about that. Let's see, anything else here? No, I think that's the, the primary one. My, my big thing is the solar access and the, and the incline plane, and the fact that these roofs are going to be so damn complicated, you can't put solar on them. And so I think we need to think about that. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Lorraine Letterner. Is there a Lorraine Letterer? Okay. Lucia Semirts, Semertz?
Sanchez.
Lucia?
Yeah. Sanchez.
I can't keep everybody's roles or whatever straight, so just thank you to all of you for the work you're doing and for hearing. I've attended a number of these meetings, and I last, I left the last meeting feeling very hopeful and inspired by the very large number of residents who were there and who were expressing, I thought, in very well-articulated way, very concrete terms, their concerns that I believed would be taken seriously by, by the staff and the consultant. And I found myself today very disappointed, very disappointed. I find very little has changed between what was proposed before, you know, at the last meeting, and what was proposed today. And I feel like we've been given a chance to speak, but not really a chance to be listened to or heard, and that's a pretty frustrating feeling. And I feel like there's been language used, like appearance, rather than let's get real, things are big. So I'm not happy, I, I would credit this forms-based thing as really trying to address a feel, a look. And I think that addresses how you feel walking by. But I've heard too many stories from too many residents about the impact that they've had in their homes, their privacy, their light, just how they feel in their homes. And I feel like that part has not been addressed very well at all. Then there's also the term Then there's also the term flexibility, and I feel like the term flexibility actually is really biased towards people building new things rather than people who are living already in a place. And I'll mention, I've been through a remodel, and we built very modestly, and there was some problem that we had where it actually got built bigger than we wanted to, and we took a hit, we all did, the people, the architect, the builder and whatever, because we cared so much about keeping within the feel of our neighborhoods and not building up. So we put our money where our mouth is in that regard. Okay. And someone brought this up, and it's something that I felt from the beginning, is this hasn't felt, on the one hand, it's an open process that we're here talking, but on the other hand, the beginning idea that Shaq was given to work on was one idea that they dedicated a ton of time to, and to me, that's not the way a process should start. It should be more open and more brainstorming. So I feel like in a way, today is an effort to save what John was calling a sophisticated process and whatever. Is that the reason we should save it because it was sophisticated and a lot of money went into it? Or maybe we made a mistake in the beginning by not being more open and brain, I don't know the right term, but keeping it a more open process from the beginning? So, okay. So, and I was going to mention the solar thing, but the gentleman brought that up. So it's just basically, to be honest, I don't think the concerns that I've heard from residents have been reflected in the minimal changes that I've seen in what's been proposed today versus what was proposed in the last meeting. And I guess I would also really encourage you guys who are new to go back and look at some of those meetings and see what people had to say, because today we spent from 7 till 9 hearing staff's proposal and the consultants, and I hope certainly John will make the effort to listen to this meeting, the full meetings, and there's a lot of important comments that people have made that are worthy of consideration. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez.
Good evening. My name's Una Kinsella. I actually live in Burlingame, but I'm an architect and I do quite a bit of work in San Carlos. As a matter of fact, probably 50% of my work is done in San Carlos, and I love San Carlos. And I've actually, I've been working here for over probably 12 to 14 years. And I would agree with most of the comments that were said tonight by the community. And I appreciate that I was invited to several of the meetings that were, had with the local architects, and, but one thing I would say is that I wish that I had been invited like a year ago. I was, I was asked about being on the Shack, or at least it was suggested to me, I wasn't available to commit to it. But by the time we got involved in the meeting, which was really productive and it was great dialogue and there was a lot of transparency, I felt like these models were already made, the code was already sort of ready to be implemented, and so the feedback that we had, it was hard to say, you know what, you guys, I'm not so sure that this form-based model is something that's going to work here. And it was hard to say that, and that's how I felt. I still feel that. I feel that it is super complex. I read through these code changes and I think, oh my gosh, how am I going to start changing my mindset to design on a property in San Carlos? How am I going to tell a client, a potential client, what I'm going to be able to design when I'm just going to present a proposal to them? I have no idea how it's going to work. It's going to be really challenging. It's going to be really, really challenging. And as somebody who has worked from, it's been years since I've worked in Palo Alto, but from Palo Alto to San Francisco, and I just finished a big project up in Santa Rosa, why isn't the idea of just doing a maximum FAR in a sensible daylight plane maybe require people to do solar studies? I mean, I've done that on projects in San Carlos where neighbors have been concerned about their light. And I say, you know what, I have a 3D model, I can show you real-world sort of solar analysis of what your home's going, how your home will be affected by my project. It's actually not that hard to do, and I think most designers and architects have the capability to do that. So some of these questions and concerns can really be addressed with an effective design review. And so one of the other things I want to point out, besides my concern about the mass and bulk and the commentary from the community of what their major concerns are, which is massing and bulk and privacy, is yeah, I don't know that this form-based model design is going to address the massing issue. And secondly, with allowing a 45-foot-long two-story structure at five feet from the property line, that's actually more imposing than what's currently allowed. So if you have a 70-foot-long, which is the maximum one-story house you can put on a 100-foot-long property, 30% of that can be a two-story element that's at five foot. That's only 21 feet wide. If you're allowing 45 feet, that's more than double what is currently allowed on either side. If you combine a 45-foot-long two-story wall and then two 18-foot wings on the opposite side, your total linear footage that can be within five foot of the property line, if you combine both sides, is 63 feet, as opposed to 21 and 21, which is 42. So it's a pretty dramatic, it's going to have a pretty dramatic impact on the neighbors on both sides. Because as an architect who's asked a lot by community, people who are building in this community, what can I get? How can I put all my bedrooms on the second floor? How can I get a great room on the first floor? You know, you are going to get designs that will do, will max this out, and the neighbors on both sides will be impacted more, I feel, than they are today with respect to the two-story, the height of the wall, a 24-foot wall at five feet from the property line. And you're not going to be able to have that dialogue probably with the neighbors about who gets more sunlight and privacy than the other. So I do think that there's more work to be done, and several of the architects in the community have spent quite a bit of time being available to discuss it with the planning staff, and I'm willing to keep working. I think that there's definitely potential to bring the house size down and really improve, you know, people's concerns or address people's concerns about bulk and privacy, but I think that there's other ways to do it. Thanks.
Thank you, Una. Next is Peter Hartzell.
Thank you very much. I just quickly reiterate a couple things and then make one main point. So I've lived in San Carlos for 14 years. I live up on Ridge Road. I've been at at least, I think, four of these meetings now. I've probably put 10 hours or more into sitting in these meetings. And I have to support Lucia's comments that I feel that I've seen letters coming to you and been in these meetings and heard a lot that I don't feel is being represented tonight, and that's frustrating. And I'm feeling a little worn out by this time. I'm sure you won't maybe as well. So I'd like you to take note of that, and I encourage you, especially the three of you who are new to the committee, to please go back and look at some of the comments that have come through that aren't represented by what we heard tonight. I think a form-based approach, I'm not an architect, but I think it certainly seems to address the massing on the street, and I appreciate that. Walking around San Carlos, I think with the glasses that Stefan has helped us put on, makes me think that this will be an improvement in that regard. But I think we made a mistake in 2011 in San Carlos by allowing this, you know, these gross homes and the 90% floor coverage. And I think as John Dugan said before he left, and others have said, I think it's going to be in the nature, especially for a developer and architect working with someone who's just bought a property, to maximize these rules that we're putting out there, which means we're going to end up with, in many cases, the 70-78% floor area ratio. That will be the default, and it will take a lot to move back from that, which I think is out of line with our neighbors and I think is out of line with the character of, that I feel is the character of San Carlos. So I'd strongly encourage you to keep in mind, I would say it's probably some combination of the form and floor area ratio, but don't throw that out. I think we're going to end up with being, continuing to be disappointed and feel like we didn't make the reform we wanted to at this point after the 2011 previous reform. I think the final point is there's an inherent asymmetric relationship when you're in front of the RDRC. You have a developer, you've got a homeowner who's got a lot on the line, is working with an architect, and they're the ones who really are going to push for what they want. The neighbors on either side, the neighbors in general, don't have the same interest, the background, the money at stake at that point. And I think to make it flexible is good, but in this case, flexible means it will default in the direction of the developers, which I think is what we've seen over the last 10 years in San Carlos. And so I would say we need to be really careful. I like the idea of improving the RDRC, although it wasn't clear tonight what exactly that means, and the word neighbor never came up in any of these bullet points. And yet it's the neighbors, I think, who've been here speaking for the last year in this process, asking for more respect for their side of this story. And so if we don't have a process that's got the right tools and that really respects the neighbor in a dignified way, I think we've missed a great opportunity, and I hope we don't do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is John Stewart.
Thanks for the opportunity to speak. I've been an architect in San Carlos for 37 years. I lived here for 14 years. I was on the committee in 2011 that changed these ordinances, and I was approached to be on the Shack, but I didn't get picked. I've been at all these meetings, and I haven't heard one person come up and say, I really like where, the direction that we're going. Every time, it's, you know, 20, 30 people saying, we're making a big mistake. The whole form-based code, there's 20 different communities in San Mateo County, not one of them has anything like this. They're out in Livermore and Petaluma. I think, you know, the consultant came in with that idea and they just ran with it. I think it's a big problem. Una did a really good job of communicating the problems with the side setbacks that you can have, so much area right up against the five-foot setback. It's much worse than what we already have. Poor Natalie sees her picture of her beautiful house every day that they say it's terrible, and then he does a sketch that just has a flat box. So I like her design much better than what the new proposal is. I think we need a floor area ratio. The only two places that don't have it are Redwood City and San Carlos, and I was at a meeting last night, and Redwood City's going to implement it. So I think guidelines would be a really good idea, like in Hillsborough, they have guidelines for how to fit in a house in a neighborhood. I think that would be very helpful. It'd be something that RDRC can use to judge whether a home fits in with the neighborhood. Clients want a two-car garage. I think 12 feet back is way too far. I mean, they make beautiful garage doors now. You can offset the doors, you can put a trellis over it. I mean, there's so many different ways of making a garage look good. The exterior wall height could prevent you from having gable situations. I don't know if you know the difference between a gable and a hip, but a hip, the roof is all going away from you where a gable shows a triangle. So that's a problem. The three-foot basement, I think, is a big problem, too, because, like somebody was saying, putting space in a basement is a good idea because it takes some of the mass and puts it in a place where you don't see it. This whole idea of waivers, to get a variance, you have to make findings, and you'd almost have to make findings for waivers, and I think leaving that to the staff would be the real sticky situation. Let's see, I said from the beginning that you've only studied rectangular, flat lots, and if you look at that drawing that was up there, at least half of San Carlos is not white oaks or Britain acres. I think the timing, you know, I've seen proposals, you're going to vote on this the next time it comes before you. I think that's way too aggressive. We got to take our time and do it right. So thanks for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, John. Next is Paul Young.
Hello. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Paul Young, and I'm a recent transplant, bought in November. I have a kind of similar situation to one of the gentlemen before me. I have an interesting topography and a home that's not compliant to kind of the proposed envelope. It's a U shape, so try to find out where the envelope is in the U. I'm looking to do an expansion, but it's, I've found kind of navigating the changing rules and proposals very, very challenging. And I'm kind of in an interesting situation where my neighbor, he did a large renovation and sort of McMansched his home, but he's well downhill, so it doesn't affect me too much. But I don't think it would impose too much on him, some of the things that I've been thinking of, and he actually proposed some of the changes that would be non-compliant but make a lot of sense, given my topography and other things. So first, I'd urge to make the RDRC have a lot of wee-wee and the ability to kind of negotiate to amicable parties. And then also, I wanted to mention that the three-foot basement is very restrictive. So I'm on Hall and Chestnut, and I have the two, two-car garage in the front, and essentially, if you treat the garage as my first floor and that's my envelope, and my house is kind of spilling out with wings everywhere in this U shape, it doesn't really give me a lot of leeway on what we can and can't do. And it just seems that the forms-based approach is very prescriptive in dealing with a general problem. And then this is kind of a separate comment, but it seems like a lot of effort and emphasis has been put on to trying to preserve San Carlos as it is. And just a general comment that I would also urge the city to kind of look at zoning and other ways to just increase housing supply in general, because while it is important to preserve the well-being and livelihood of people who are currently here, there's a lot of people who are excluded from the community because they just can't simply afford to live here. And I think we're kind of trying to protect people's homes as they are now, but we're also investing all that energy in a way that excludes people from building higher-density homes and other things in the area. So, thank you.
Thank you. This may be the last speaker if the others two didn't come back. Tom Deardine? Anybody named Tom? Going once. How about Kevin Frederick? Did he come back? Or Lorraine Letterer? All right, that's all the slips I have. We have questions?
Well, I've got a couple comments. One is, I'm not ready to have a public hearing yet. I think we need another study session because there's plenty of things that I want more information on. So I would, I would throw my hat in the ring saying that we would ask for another study session. The other thing is, this is just my take on it, that I'm having a hard time justifying a forms-based approach when it seems to me that it's easier to get to with the same solution, probably even better solution, when we talk about different-shaped lots with percent lot coverage and FAR combination. So I guess we need to decide whether or not, how we go forward, whether we go to a public hearing or whether we want to request another study session. I guess that's where we are. If we are going to request another study session, I do have things that I would like to ask for out of that session, so.
Okay. I'll defer to the staff.
Well, we're, staff is looking for direction from the commission, so it's really up to you to kind of direct us where you'd like us to go. If you wanted us to... If you wanted us to bring forward some more information on daylight plane and FAR and lot coverage or setbacks, if you're not ready to make a decision, that's fine, too. You could say, okay, next meeting, we want to have a study session. But I think that we need some direction on what you're looking for specifically, and so that would be a big help for staff.
So maybe one suggestion is, or request, is there a way to work within the form-based model, but actually change what's proposed and what's going to be allowed, that in such a way that it actually reduces further the size of the square footage that actually would be allowable in this world where everyone is going to take advantage of what's the maximum allowed? So what proposals might, or alterations to what's already out there, could further reduce this maximum-size home and effectively limit the floor area ratio without making that the primary consideration? So that would be good to know. And then I think one other is, with the daylight plane concept, again, is there a way to modify what's been proposed in the way of maybe the second-story setback to demonstrate that actually the community's concerns about side yard light are being heard, or show that they have been a little more clearly? And then I think the third request from would be this area, this notion that the current proposal allows the entire side of one of the homes at the five-foot setback line to be two full-story, 45 feet. Seems troubling to a lot of the community, and I would echo that again. So how might we think about that differently?
Would you like to address that, Stefan?
You know, I think that those are good questions, and we can come back with answers to those questions, as opposed to kind of trying to address them this evening.
Do you have any more? Okay, I have a number of things that I'd like to see. One is taking the thing from good growth here and looking at the, you can take the higher of the number, averages, right, 60%, 56%. Using the average number here, I'd like to see a comparable combination of percent lot coverage and FAR that would get us to the average. I want to see how it plays out like that, because I want to know where we want to be. Because I think, personally, I think we want to be somewhere in the middle, right, as a community. I don't think we need to be so restrictive, you can't do anything, but I think median or average is a good place to be. So I'd like to see the comparable equivalent that way. I'd like to understand better the impact on the Crestview neighborhood, because I think that we're focusing a lot on the flats, but we have a couple of hillside districts in Crestview, and I don't think that this really is as thought through as it needs to be to address the needs of all those communities. I don't think we fully thought through, and would like more information on the solar impact, the daylight planes, the, how, what the regulations actually say. I'd like to have more information on that. And I don't remember who the lady, I forget, she was the other architect that was here, and she was talking about, you know, the linear feet. I don't, yeah, I don't, yeah, thank you. I don't completely understand that, the linear feet and what her example was. I'd like to see, I'd like to actually see that in a drawing, what she was talking about. Because she was talking about how there's like, there's actually going to be, I mean, on the side, there's going to be more, there'll be more exposed linear feet of the house to the neighbors than in the proposed forms-based solution. So I'd like to see that, how that works. I think I explained that? Okay. Let me see if there's anything else. Just a comment, with the main body style, the main body style way of doing this thing, I really question how that's going to play out in remodels. And so much of what we do are remodels, not new builds, because how many of these houses have a real main body style? And if they go to do a remodel, I mean, it seems to me that's going to be a huge mess because houses have not been built that way for a long time. We're not talking about a lot of new development. We have a lot of this existing development, and I don't know if you can give me some idea of how the remodels would work. I know we're saying we make them conform to the new code, but just how difficult is that going to be, considering no one's built to that standard? I mean, are those houses like innately have the main body style in them already? Or, I don't understand that part, so if you can clarify that. So I think that's all. That's all.
I'll make a motion that we... Go ahead.
I also support having another study session, and I agree that the application of the forms-based approach to remodels sounds complicated. I don't want to throw away the forms-based approach because there's some win-win opportunity. So in addition to being able to see if we can turn down the dial on a strictly forms-based approach, as Jim was suggesting, the combination of the forms-based approach with a, with an alternative maximum ratio is a possibility. So.
We have a motion and a second for additional study session.
Oh, you want a motion? I motion that we have an additional study session on a date to be determined.
I second that motion.
Commissioner Roof?
Yes.
Commissioner Yakapony?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
And Chair Bradley?
Yes. Next item on the agenda are reports, correspondence, general information from the staff.
And yes, through the chair, this isn't broken down, as you might see it on your regular agenda, but I'll go ahead and jump in and start first, and if any of the commissioners have any updates, you all can let me know as well. So the first announcement is that, as the commission does every summer, is we take a summer recess. So I wanted to announce that the regular meeting of August 6th is canceled for a summer recess. The next meeting of the planning commission would be on Monday, August 20th, and we have two items that will be on the commission's agenda, one of which will be a revised dirt hall route for the Winding Way project, and the second will be a multifamily housing project at 549 Prospect. The other thing that I was going to mention, I do not need to mention, given that the commission made a motion for a second study session. So those are the two announcements that I have for this evening. August 6th canceled, we'll come back on August the 20th. Thank you.
All right. Any comments from commissioners? Can I declare the meeting adjourned?